Two o'clock, let's begin regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday, May fourteenth, and we will ask for a roll call.
Just waiting for the court reporter, she's having a technical issue. Can you hear?
Yes. Can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, looks like that's been fixed, so the roll call for Commissioner Anna Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Here.
Commissioner Anna Hanson.
Present.
Commissioner Camila Bustamante.
Present.
And Chair Hank Hughes.
Present.
Thank you.
And we have a quorum, so let's do the pledge of allegiance and the state pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, indivisible, with equal justice. To the flag of the State of New Mexico, to see a simple, perfect friendship among united cultures.
And for the land acknowledgement, I acknowledge that this county building and Santa Fe County is on the original homelands of the Tiwá people, who know it as Oga Pogue Owinge, White Shell Water Place. And for a moment of reflection, we have Pablo Montano and Mr. Hanson also.
Let us take a moment to focus on the work ahead of us today, being ever mindful of our decisions and in the best interest of our committee, we take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, I wanted to recognize and send condolences to the Hicaria Apache Nation as President Edward Varela passed away over the weekend, and I had the honor of meeting him when we joined the Solar Direct program out on the land of the Hicaria Apache Nation, and so I wanted to recognize that and take a moment of silence for the Apache Nation and for his family.
Okay. Approval of the agenda, Manager Shaffer, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, there are no recommended changes to the agenda as presented. I would just note that the initial agenda for today's meeting was posted on Tuesday, May seventh, and the final agenda was posted on Friday, May tenth, at 5:32 PM, more than seventy-two hours in advance of today's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda presented.
Second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Green, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved, and now we will move to approval of April ninth, twenty twenty-four, Board of County Commissioners' meeting minutes. Anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Then we'll throw it on the motion by Commissioner Hamilton, seconded by Commissioner Bustamante, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? No nays? Okay, next we are moving to request approval of a letter from the Board of County Commissioners to New Mexico Congressional Delegation opposing legislation that would increase the size and weight of commercial trucks. So this is a request that was made of us, of the national movement, to express our concern about the increase in weight, and I certainly do not want trucks that weigh more than they do primarily, well, maybe primarily because of safety, but also because of the damage they would do to our roads and highways. And Commissioner Hanson, do you want to add anything to that?
I'm happy to support this with you because I think as we move forward, transportation of goods need to be respected, and our roads need to be respected, and I think that it is quite dangerous also, so I'm happy to support this with you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Green?
Just to understand, like, are we thinking that this is a nationwide thing, or is this for interstate, or is it more for local roads and state roads? Are we concerned about the federal highway system, which is essentially funded by the federal highway system, or this is just a unilateral, we just think that we should have smaller trucks?
The proposal, I think, it covers more than just interstate highways, it's, you know, one proposal would allow states to raise the weight limit, and the other state would raise it nationally, but it's not just on highways, although I think that they take enough beating too, so, yes.
So, you know, also I want to mention that the National Association of Counties, NACO, also supports this and recognizes the impact to counties from trucks that are increase in weight and length, and so, and as many of you know, NACO is a fairly conservative argument fiction.
Right, okay.
My concern is, is that it seems like this would be an efficiency thing at the same time, right, so there's a level of, it's definitely a trade-off in this conversation, if you, you know, if safety can be proven that this is a significantly less safe or more dangerous, you know, trend, then for sure, I just would love to hear a study on things like that, but I'm in support of this, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if it becomes more of a national thing, there'll be more studies and such. I think it's really a long shot now, but we're just expressing our view. Okay, did you second my motion?
I did.
All right, so motion by Hughes, seconded by Hanson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody opposed, okay, thank you. And next is request approval of a letter from the Board of County Commissioners to the Burnleyo County Parks Recreation and Open Space Department in support of a proposed New Mexico COVID-19 memorial. And, well, I will actually, I'll say a few words, and then I'll let two or three, perhaps, supporters say thirty seconds, but, I mean, it's, they're proposing to build a memorial to the thirty thousand or so people who died from COVID, and I think it's totally appropriate, and they're not asking us for any money, so, I mean, that may come next, but so far, no money. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Bustamante? Cliff and Eleanor, would you like to each say thirty seconds of why we're doing this?
Thank you, Commissioners, my name is Eleanor Bravo, I lost my only sister to COVID on October sixth, twenty twenty, she was not sick, but she did contract COVID while she was in rehab, she was then intubated, she died five years, five days later. There was no vaccine, we were not allowed to fly, she was not in New Mexico, she essentially died alone. I'm the chair of the Steering Committee of the COVID-19 Memorial, and we are dedicating our time and energy to make sure that these, these people are not just statistics, and that they will never be forgotten, and that this country must always bear witness to what has happened here, and we need our government to help us heal. These deaths were like someone who may have died in World War II, you didn't know where they were, you never got to see the body, we couldn't have a memorial for two years after she died, so we need this place to grieve, and, and we have, thanks to State Land Commissioner, we have a lovely site in Burnleyo County. I'll let Cliff say something, thank you so much, and we really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Clifford Reese, many of you know me, I wear many public hats, today I'm wearing the hats of a retired public health attorney, who as an attorney for the Department of Health helped to draft the Public Health Emergency Response Act in the aftermath of nine eleven, that the governor used for the first time on March eleventh, twenty twenty, to declare public health emergency due to the COVID virus in New Mexico. We've lost approximately four hundred and ten Santa Fe Countians during the pandemic, approximately nine thousand six hundred New Mexicans statewide, one point one million Americans, and many millions, of course, across the world. I joined this advisory group as part of what I consider to be my duty of remembrance for the people that have passed, one of my best friend's wives, who was Santa Fe County and died from COVID, and so in her memory, in the memory of all the others, I'm participating in this process. We've received generously over a million dollars of capital outlay from the legislature over the last two sessions to create this memorial, which will be for all New Mexicans on Mesa del Sol in Albuquerque, and we appreciate Santa Fe County's letter of support in this endeavor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Bustamante?
I want to thank you for bringing this forward, as a public health, a master of public health person, not allowing this to just go by the wayside, something that we forget, or everyone remembers, remember that back when, but to acknowledge that what we need to do to stay on top of public health issues, to continue to support the bigger picture, we, and I'm going to be very honest with you, I, I had actually even taken classes out of the Chang School of Public Health, I thought this country has it all wrapped up, we're going to be fine, I made an embarrassing bet that it wouldn't get as bad as it did, only to have to acknowledge that we had really put down our guard in so many ways, and we did not have the federal response, I'm grateful to the governor, who had a more statewide, tight response, I'm grateful for those who did have, at the federal level, the wisdom to make sure that people were protected, but it went too long, and it went, it didn't necessarily have to happen, we need to stay vigilant, it is my hope that putting up a memorial such as this, I did lose family members, I lost an uncle, if we are able to put something like this, that we should never forget, that we need to stay strong in our public health vision, and recognize that systems need to be in place in the event that, if things were to happen again, so thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you for your work in public health, sincerely.
And if I may add, Mr. Chairman, Reverend Holly Beaumont was planning to join us, I'm not sure if she was able to make it, but she wanted us to...
Oh, there she is.
She wanted us to remember, as she'll describe, the essential workers who responded to this pandemic.
Go ahead, Holly.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, I'm sorry I'm late. The more I have delved into the importance of this memorial, the more I am impressed with the way it might possibly be a vehicle for healing us, not only in New Mexico, but across the nation. I was reading a very interesting research project from the University of Minnesota that was done about casualties among essential workers, which is my particular concern, I'm the Reverend Holly Beaumont, Interfaith Worker Justice, New Mexico, and what they were focusing on was not only the number of casualties, but the number of orphans. They actually did a study of the number of orphans that have been created by the COVID epidemic, who are sons and daughters of essential workers across this country. A memorial such as the one that is being proposed for the State of New Mexico has a profound power for healing, that these children know that their work and their sacrifice has been acknowledged and memorialized, and they can go to that place when they need to, in order to remember and go on, so we very much thank you for considering this resolution, and look forward to the day that we break ground and celebrate the construction of this memorial for New Mexico, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Thank you, Chair Hughes, for bringing this forward, it is incredibly important, so many people have suffered during COVID, there's been so much sadness and grief that has happened, that it is, seems to me incredibly important to have a memorial for the people who have passed away from COVID, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you to the advocates and to the sponsor of this, you know, a memorial like this is a great opportunity for a reflection point, a place for everybody to come together and recognize, you know, one, how soon we forget, right, I mean, we are just a few years away from this, and we've, you know, forgotten a lot of what, where we were four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, so this will be, create a memorial for those of us that experienced it, to, to have a place to remember, and then as the ages go by, maybe a place for future generations to go look and have some memorial to reflect on, so I'm in support of this, I hope they can get this built relatively quickly, and I look forward to being there when it's dedicated, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt this letter of support. So, motion by Hughes, seconded by Commissioner Bustamante, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have done the letter. Thank you to the three advocates for bringing this to our attention and, and coming in to speak about it. Number four, are there any items on the consent agenda which anybody wants to remove to discuss?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No.
Go ahead, you got it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Hamilton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is passed, and I see two resolutions that need numbers.
Yes, Mr. Chair, resolution number is twenty twenty-four dash zero six six, sorry, it was very tiny print, and twenty twenty-four dash zero six seven.
Thank you. And now appointment of the Planning Commissioner from District Five, Jordan.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, Chapter Three of the SLDC gives the BCC the authority to appoint members of the Planning Commission, via Section three point three point three point one, states the Planning Commission shall consist of seven members appointed by the Board, the Planning Commission members shall be registered voters of the county, one member shall reside in each of the commission districts in order to provide diversity of representation, the remaining members shall be at large and may reside in any area of the county and may be nominated by the commissioner. Staff is requesting that BCC nominate and appoint one member representing District Five, the term of this member of the Planning Commission shall be for the remainder of the current term of the resigning member, which expires in January twenty twenty-five. Currently, District Five Planning Commission Member Rhea Serna notified staff on March twenty twenty-four that she was unable to complete her term as a Planning Commission member, which expires January twenty twenty-five, Ms. Serna's last meeting with the Planning Commission was on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. In March of twenty twenty-four, the county sent out a press release seeking interested members of the general public to serve on the Planning Commission for District Five. We received inquiries from five individuals, one of the five, of the five, one withdrew from consideration, and another did not submit the required paperwork as stated in a press release, and was considered incomplete. The staff is recommending the approval of Ruben Mendoza for District Five position to serve the remaining of the term, which expires in January twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, since I am from District Five, and I have heard from his neighbors that he's a good guy, so I'm fine with that, any more comments from the board? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve Ruben Mendoza to serve the remainder of the term.
Second.
Motion by me, seconded by Hanson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, okay. Now, the request appointment and reappointment of members to the Water Policy Advisory Committee.
Okay, I think I got it, sorry. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm here to present a request for appointments and reappointments to the county's Water Policy Advisory Committee. The Board adopted Resolution Number twenty twenty-four zero three eight at its March twenty-sixth meeting, per the updated resolution, the W-PAC shall be comprised of one non-voting member of the Board of County Commissioners, who will assist by vetting and championing advisory recommendations made by the committee, and up to nineteen voting members appointed by this Board, to include ten members from the eight pueblos within Santa Fe County, and the City of Santa Fe Water Conservation Committee, and the Buckman Direct Diversion Board, as recommended by those entities. Staff met with three of the four current W-PAC members at their April eleventh regular meeting, and confirmed that their terms have expired, staff thanked them for their service and encouraged them to submit new letters of interest and resumes if they wished to be reappointed, three of those members did. Staff solicited recommendations for members from the eight pueblo governors, and the city's Water Conservation Committee, and the Buckman Direct Diversion Board, as of today, we were... Committee, and the Buckman Direct Diversion Board. As of today, we received one response from the Puebla Governor Janel Roybal, who recommended Jeffrey Montoya, the Secretary of the Northern Pueblo's Tributary Water Rights Association. We were unable to obtain recommendations from the other seven pueblos or the city before today's meeting. Staff also solicited letters of interest from the general public via press release on April 5, and received 13 applications by the April 19 deadline. Before the Board today is a request to decide how to proceed. Aside from appointing one Commissioner to serve as the non-voting member, option one, you may decide to appoint the individual recommended by Puebla, which is Jeff Montoya, and nine applicants from the list of 13. This will ensure that there is room on the W-PAC for future members from the pueblos and the city of Santa Fe. Option two is you may decide to appoint all 13 applicants who submitted letters of interest with the person recommended by the Puebla. Staff recommends option one, as it leaves room for pueblo and city representation in the future, and holds up this Board's intention to include diverse voices representing significant stakeholders and further city-county collaboration. If the Board chooses option one, the selection committee recommends the nine candidates that are listed in your packet material. And I have with me Brett Clavio. He is the Growth Management Planning Division Staff Liaison. Jacqueline Beam is a sustainability liaison to this committee, she's on WebEx. And Paul Coman is the Utilities Liaison, and he was unable to attend today. But we stand for questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Hamilton?
I don't actually have any questions. I have comments. First of all, I think the W-PAC has been an incredibly valuable committee for the county, and I really appreciate the effort that staff did, starting with Sarah, and going through all the three liaisons from departments, and the manager's office, and Utilities, and everybody who contributed to essentially, you know, re-enliven this committee, right? I really appreciate the Board members who operated, the committee members who operated in good faith and making some good progress through some difficult times with really low membership. And I was incredibly impressed with the, with the applications we got, some really, really good members. And so I am very enthusiastic about what this committee can contribute going forward. Really, really happy to see that. And I want to express that I strongly support option one. I think there was good thought put into who to accept. It's absolutely no, you know, no, I'll take the county managers. No shade on the people who were not picked, they would have all been fabulous, but I think it's important to leave the option to fill the other positions as was designated. So, I would love if nobody objects to move, to support option one.
Commissioner Bustamante?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hughes. I do have a concern that we don't have, and I guess from the top, everyone was so exceptionally qualified for this. So, I just want to publicly thank everyone who reached out and wanted to be a part of the W-PAC. We don't have anyone, when we look at one particular protester, candidate Darren Munzenberg, he is probably the only person who is on the farthest south of District Three, that is experiencing some of the water issues from what is happening just north of that, being from La Bahada. And that, given, you know, the diversity on the group, and what their impact is downstream, closest to not only the pueblo, and we would have some assistance there and input, but to have someone from the La Bahada Village, who actually is a recipient of the Santa Fe River water, I just see him in this unique position. He's incredibly knowledgeable. Is there
There's a, there is someone from District, from the Estancia area, southern area.
Right, but this Estancia is right over the hill, it's not on the same aquifer. So, that one is because it's on the same aquifer that the contamination is coming out of the wastewater treatment facility, that is the reason, only because of the impacts that we've had from the city of Santa Fe and the wastewater treatment facility to the village of La Bahada. So, it is the issue, and we need to have someone from the Estancia area, we've usually not, that's been a vacant position now for years. So, that's a difficult one to move over. I just express concern that we wouldn't be able to have the individual. I would actually recommend that Mr. Munzenberg, in the interest of keeping the Estancia basin seat, would actually be replaced by, oh, that's difficult. It would have to be Estancia, so.
Madam Chair, I mean, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I support what Commissioner Bustamante is saying about Darren Munzenberg, as somebody who is incredibly active and works in the arena of water on a regular basis. And I think he would bring incredible value to the committee. So, what I'm wondering is, can we point at 11 and make it, just, we still would have two open seats, right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hanson, if you added Darren to the list of appointees, it would be, you'd be recommending 10, who applied generally, and then the Puebla representative. So, we'd have 11.
Right.
Yeah.
Would we still be, excuse me, Chairman Hughes, would we still be short, would that make us short for the pueblos, not looking at the numbers, I'm not, would we still, would we be short of an entity that would be allowed to come in and bring someone?
By one.
I'm sorry?
Yes, just by one.
By one?
I don't understand the question.
Because of the vacant positions that are remaining open because of option one, we would be short one in that regard, if we, if we did appoint a 10th. And I don't think we want to do that, because that bypasses option one. And I think we're
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't sure which way you were saying it, that's why I was confused. I'm with you now. Thank you.
In the interest, in this interest, not to, and I'm grateful that we have someone from the Estancia area, it has been unique, we haven't had someone from Galisteo. The unique issues at this time, and I think and I hope that they remain unique to the concerns downstream, I would make the recommendation that number seven, that Darren Munzenberg replace number seven, which would remove someone from the Galisteo Planning Area, but assure that we have someone as far downstream as La Bahada Village, the recipients of the contaminated water from the city and the county. That's, that's
I could totally, I could support that. I'm happy with that replacement.
So, I'll second that motion.
I don't, did you already motion?
I did.
But she didn't get a second, so I'll second the
With that amendment.
And now it's amended to replace Laird Gracer with Darren Munzenberg, right?
Yes, with, with, so the motion now stands with Commissioner Bustamante's amendment.
Okay. Mr. Green?
Thank you. I'm generally in support of that amendment of option one. I just, for, in looking at the representation for District One, and the fact that we are in the process of building one of the largest water projects, certainly in, in Santa Fe County's history with the AMIT project, it's wonderful to see Jeffrey Montoya, Jeff Montoya on here, representing the pueblos, he seats himself there. But it would also be great to see somebody from the Espanola Valley as well, because that is another whole valley in itself, whether it's the Santa Cruz Valley. So, we'll have two more seats to seat, and I hope that we really target, look at how the dynamic is, and that we look at the, the folks from, from the areas that are underrepresented in the future. But I'm generally in support of this. Jeff Montoya is a great guy, very knowledgeable. I've worked with him on water issues as well as broadband issues, and I think this is an important appointment. And then John Kadlecak up in Rioan Medio has been very active in issues up in the foothills up there. But we all have very diverse districts, and I just want to make sure that we're not just so centrally located in the center, center of our thing. So, let's go find these people that are at the extreme edges and understand their, their basins.
Mr. Chair, I think that's part of the reason why I believe Commissioner Bustamante, and I believe that Darren Munzenberg is a really important person to have on this committee.
No doubt. Supporting, supportive of that, and I think somebody that is, can represent and understand the issues of the downstreamers in the Santa Fe River Basin is an important, important place. Can I ask just one question about this? The non, so it seems like there are two city members, a member of the City, City of Santa Fe Conservation Committee, recommended by that committee? So, that is a seat that we're awaiting to have adopted? Or is that one of these that I just missed where that was, where they were already?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Green, that's correct. There are two seats open for the City of Santa Fe Water Conservation Committee member, and also the Buckman Direct Diversion Board.
So the
Which is a city-county board.
Which is not a city
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be a city councillor, in that case. It could be
Absolutely not.
It could be the at-large people from the BDD. Okay, wonderful.
In the past, we have recommended Tom Eaglehoff to be the member for BDD, but for some reason, it never got formally passed at BDD, so we're waiting for that to happen.
But it could be a city councillor too, if we, so, if, if they recommended it. Is this an issue that we should be asking BDD to have on their agenda at the next meeting to
It's already, it's already taken care of.
Is it? Okay, great.
Okay, well, we have a motion from Commissioner Hamilton, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. I agree with option one as well. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Just to be clear, it was the amended option one?
Amended option one.
Mr. Chair, may I just clarify? The, the motion that was on the floor is to appoint the members listed in the memo, but replace number seven with Darren Munzenberg?
Yes.
Okay. And also, there's another item, there's another portion of this motion.
Yes, now we need to appoint a Commissioner.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bustamante to that position.
A second.
Do you accept the nomination, Commissioner?
I accept that. Thank you very much for your confidence.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, Commissioner Bustamante, there you go.
Thank you. I have another committee to sit on, but I'm grateful to do this. In the interest of having pulled this together, thank you for bringing this through the process, through the county manager's office. I'm looking forward to hearing, and I don't know if this is necessarily the time, I don't think it is, of the next steps. We'll have the next meeting, work towards getting people on the results-based accountability, recognizing that this Board will be making recommendations to this governing body, in the interest of moving projects forward. So, we can look at the timeline for that as we get started at our next meeting. So, thank you very much.
I have some information on that, if you'd like to hear. Just a brief overview. So, the resolution that made these changes to W-PAC asserted that the, the committee, the new committee members, would present to the Board within four months of adoption, which would be July 30. So, that's a lot of work for this committee to do. So, the intention of CMO and the staff liaisons in the departments is to gather these new committee members as soon as possible, and start an onboarding process, so that they can start to develop and present the first work draft plan, and get trained up in results-based accountability framework and SMART goals, and make sure that those are included in the, the work plan that's presented on the 30.
You're gonna, the CMO just plans to do an onboarding process? That's fabulous. I'm really impressed. Thank you.
We're gonna do our best.
That's fabulous.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
So, now we have 6A, approval to purchase Kenwood radios using in New Mexico, statewide price agreement number 10-0000020-00048, and that will be presented by Jacob.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The Fire Department is requesting approval to utilize the statewide price agreement to purchase Kenwood portable and mobile radios. During FY '24, the county received 12 grants from the New Mexico State Fire Marshal's Office, totaling just over $1.5 million to purchase new radios. To maximize the grant, an additional $31,000 will be utilized from the Fire Department funds. These radios will meet the immediate need of replacing old and outdated radios that are ending near of life. Furthermore, the purchase will serve as they, serve as a, will meet a future need, as they will also work on the State 700 system, as the department moves to that system in 2025. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief Black. In the past, I've heard that there are some dark spots up in the mountains. Is this radio system gonna be able to sort of upgrade and help you guys navigate up in the forest in these remote spots?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Green, the overarching radio program, project was outlined by Federal Engineering, as they did a very thorough and comprehensive analysis. They did identify some areas that are, some dead areas up in the Glorieta area, as well as the Chimayo area. There are proposals in their, over, in their project to add additional repeater sites. However, our staff has utilized, has upgraded just some of the portable radios that we currently have, and we've already seen significant improvements, just by updating our technology with the hardware that we currently have. So, when we move over to the state system, and as the county works to add infrastructure to make our radio system as robust as possible, we forecast that there's gonna, or we predict that there's gonna be tremendous improvements in the radio coverage.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Nope. If not, I will move to, yes, move to approve the purchase of Kenwood radios, utilizing the New Mexico statewide price agreement, number 10000002000048, for a total sum of $1,583, $83,710.81, inclusive of GRT, and to delegate signing authority to the county manager.
Are you sure you got all those zeros correct?
No.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Green, seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we've approved the purchase of the radios.
Thank you.
Hope they work well. Number B is the interim budget manager Schaefer, Director Schaefer, I'm sorry, Director Herrera and Manager Schaefer.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, our finance director is going to lead the presentation relative to the interim budget.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, before you is the fiscal year 2025 interim budget. We spent the last two weeks with each other going over the, the department requests. Subsequent to those meetings, the budget was put together and balanced. What was presented to the Board was at the department level, the budget itself has to be then reworked, so that we balance it by fund based upon revenue, resources, and expenditures. The county's proposed operating budget, which includes recurring operational expenses, non-recurring operational expenses, fixed assets, and non-project capital expenditures relies upon, among other things, revenue in excess of expenditures from the previous fiscal year. While these figures have been While these figures have been estimated for purposes of preparing the budget for fiscal year 25, we will not have a final estimated ending cash balance until the county's fourth quarter report, which will be approved by the board, which will be presented and hopefully approved by the board in July, and will not have actual unaudited figures until September. To account for the timing differences, and recognizing some uncertainties in the estimates that we provided to the board, the interim budget isn't going to, doesn't, does not include the following significant items. Budget contingencies totaling $20,856,000 amounts to be funded in fiscal year 25, using the unused budget contingencies from fiscal year 24, for temporary procurement and grant management staff in the amount of $530,008, $530,854. In addition, the $7,135,000 for affordable housing programs, $10 million for the enterprise resource planning system, and the final amount will be the $4 million for affordable housing programs. The $4 million was approved by the board during the fiscal year 24 mid-year budget, budget adjustment, due to the timing of when the funding was provided and standing up the programs, that money will, isn't planned to be spent now in fiscal year 24, but is planned, is planning to be spent in fiscal year 25. The items, all the items previously discussed, or previously mentioned, will be discussed, will be addressed as part of the final budget that will be, that will be presented to the board, in addition to the results from the county's fourth quarter report for fiscal year 24. Currently, the interim budget being presented to the board is using $45,927,820 of non-recurring resources, also known as budgeted cash, for fixed assets, non-recurring expenditures, and to balance various funds. The final amounts will be dependent upon the county's fourth quarter report and/or the actual results for fiscal year 24. The interim budget presented also includes for fiscal year 25 debt service payments as follows. GO, general obligation bond debt service of $16,650,775, jail revenue bond debt service in the amount of $2,295,300, and finally, gross receipts tax revenue bond debt service Finally, I think finally, in addition to what was presented to the board for the departments, we also, we've also included transfers, various transfers between the different funds to move revenue from one fund to another for operational support, fixed asset purchases in the amount of $79,425,383. Included, well, what we did include in the budget related to the compensation package that was presented to the board, the funding for it is included in the finance division's budget, and is, is based upon when we thought, or when we estimate those items to go into effect, such as health insurance, the new premiums go into effect in January, so based upon it being half a year for fiscal year 25, half of it has been included in the 24 budget. And based upon evaluation of the department's budget for fiscal year 25, the funding will be moved to the various departments based upon, based upon need. The last component that was included in the interim budget for fiscal year 25 are the items that was, that Commissioner Green presented at our last meeting. $50,000 to study the need and for feasibility for an outdoor amphitheater and/or to plan and design the amphitheater contingent upon a dollar-to-dollar, dollar-for-dollar contribution from the City of Santa Fe, as well as the Board of County Commissioners approving the use of those funds for anything other than need feasibility, than a need or feasibility study. Also, $60,000 for spay and neuter clinics, and the other item that Commissioner Green provided, management believes that the cost for the Animal Welfare Summit can be absorbed with the county manager's budget as presented for fiscal year 25. Finally, the interim budget for 25 that's being presented to the board today totals $347,277, sorry, $347,277,395, which is inclusive of transfers, as well as debt service. The attachment, or the handout that was provided by Daniel, thank you, Daniel, is a summary of the department requests, the budget for fiscal year 25 by department, inclusive of capital outlay, debt service, transfers, as well as the pass-through for the North Central Regional Transit District. The county receives a portion of the GRT collected for NCRTD, and once each month that the county receives, receives those funds, we pay those funds out to the district, so there's no, it's money in and money out, there's no impact to the county's budget. With that, Mr. Chair, we stand for any questions the board may have regarding the department's budget requests, or any of the additional items that we included to create the interim budget for fiscal year 25.
Okay. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank Yvonne, thank you, Yvonne, and thank you, Greg, for putting this all together, and to your entire team, and anybody that touches the calculators and Excel spreadsheets. One, first thing, just an additional thank you for, for accepting my, at least at your level, and maybe hopefully for my fellow commissioners, the additional items on this for the amphitheater, spay and neuter clinic, and an animal welfare summit. I think these are all three things that are small enough amounts that are not going to impact the overall budget, but will have an impact on the areas that are important to many of our constituents, and in areas that the county can step up and help us with. I do have two questions. First, last year, we had about a million and a half dollars set aside for broadband projects. I, I don't know if I saw that rolling over, or if that is now disappearing because we didn't deploy it, and just wondering if that's still remaining in there for next year in broadband projects.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Green, we would have to double-check to see how it was budgeted. So for the interim budget, we look at operating, non-recurring items to create the interim budget. If it's classified as capital, then we look at that for the final budget, so that would be, we would wanna, we, we've, we have made a notation, we'll double-check to see how it was budgeted in 24, and ensure that if it hasn't been started, that those funds will be carried over.
Okay, 'cause it could have been capital, but it also has some planning aspects to it, so I'm not quite sure where it fell, and I just want to make sure that it didn't disappear, because we're going into a year of potentially a lot of broadband opportunities and leveraging funds for that. And so, did you get some secret information from Paul, Greg?
No. What Miss, what Director Herrera said stands, but we'll make sure to capture that item. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. And then the second item, which may be in the same sort of boat of what, that it might have been in the capital budget, we had set aside $10 million last year for matching funds, and is that rolling over, and is that reflected somewhere in here?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Green, it's not reflected in the interim budget, that was part of the overall budgeted contingencies that Yvonne started, stated at the beginning of her presentation. So the expectation is that the unused amount that is not being allocated for our surge capacity in terms of grant management or procurement folks, that that would be available for matching funds. So again, that's addressed at the top of the memo, and we would anticipate addressing that as part of the final budget.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bustamante?
Ms. Herrera and Manager Schaefer, a question that I had, when funds are rolled over, and there was something that was brought to my attention, that there was, there were going to be, and this is really like going back into some extent of history in 2012, for repairs at the District Attorney's Building, that didn't happen, but that funds had continued to be rolled over. What is our ability to manage or understand what hasn't been completed, or what is still expected? And I don't know, I'm sincerely asking this as a question, and did that not happen?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bustamante, funded projects, including the District Attorney's remodel, will be addressed at length during the capital section of our budget, which we haven't addressed yet, and the short answer to your question is that funds allocated to a big capital project, for lack of a better word, they carry over until the board tells us to do something else with them.
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion? Mr. Chair?
No. Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, so I will make a motion, a resolution, adopting the interim budget for fiscal year 2024-2025, FY25.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? No, it was, it was, you did such a good job putting the budget together, that we can't change it. But that's good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody's opposed. Very good.
Just again, thank Yvonne and her team for all of the exceptionally hard work, and also thank the board for your generosity with the time, your time throughout the budget process, as well as for the part of the budget process that remains. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, would you like a resolution number?
Sure.
2024-068.
Okay, thank you. Next is item C, request approval of amendment number eight to the collective bargaining agreement between Santa Fe County Deputy Sheriff's Association, a subsidiary of the New Mexico Coalition of Public Safes Officers, and that will be Rachel Brown and Valerie Park. Go ahead, Rachel.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, as you know, we have a collective bargaining agreement with the Sheriff's Deputies Association, and we're bringing forward amendment number eight today to address some remaining grant funding that will expire at the end of June, and proposing to utilize some of that grant funding for additional retention incentives for our bargaining unit officers. The retention period during which they could earn additional retention incentives would be from May 18th through June 14th, with a guaranteed payout for the retention incentive they earn by June 28th, and that would allow us to meet the grant's deadlines for expenditure of funds. Each of the various ranks would earn a different percentage associated with their hourly rate, with a hope that those who participate would earn somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,250, I believe, and the deputy county manager may correct that dollar amount. That's an estimate, because this is based on how, how much time they put in, the gross earnings they have during the retention period, which is the two pay periods that I identified. 12:51, excuse me, I was off by a dollar. And I would stand for questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, well, thank you for moving ahead to use this in such a good way, it's really, I'm sure they appreciate it, and it's really a good move on the county's part. And I'll, we do need action on this, right?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve this.
I would second that, and I'd like to also, Mr. Chair, I understand the effort that it takes to work in, in getting to an agreement, so I'm grateful for your efforts in making this work for everyone involved, so thank you very much, and I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hamilton, seconded by Commissioner Bustamante. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
You've passed, so we approve the agreement. Finally, number D, resolution requesting a budget increase to general fund in the amount of $1,050,000, and that will be-
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the budget increase before you is for the clerk's office in regards to two memorandums received from the Secretary of State for, to reimburse the county, or at all counties, for necessary and reasonable expenditures for the administration of a statewide election, or post-election canvas, per state statute, section 1-11-19, and administrative code 10 dot, 10 dot 1 dot 10 dot 36. Secretary of State is required to provide counties with an MOU at least 90 days prior to election day, with the MOU being finalized at least 60 days prior to the election day. Eligible expenses under the MOU include cost of temporary election workers' rental, voting convenience centers, transportation of voting machines, elections, advertising, and supplies. The county and Secretary of State entered into two different MOUs, one for the 2023 regular local election, held on November 7th, exhibit A, and one for the statewide primary election to be held on June 4th, which is exhibit B. The budget for the revenue, the clerk's office would like to budget this revenue increase, authorize expenditures for fiscal year 24. Currently, the 2024 budget for the Bureau of Elections is $2,375,545. The first MOU for the 23 regular local election is, provides $400,000 for election costs. The 2024 primary election, the total amount is 650. This, these additional MOUs will increase, will adjust the elections, the Bureau of Elections' budget to $3,425,545. To date, the elections, the Bureau of Elections has spent $1,474,045 of its current budget for fiscal year 25. The budget adjustment would be to authorize an additional $1,050,000 of expenditures in the last two fiscal, in the last two months of the fiscal year 24. And with that, Mr. Chair, the clerk, Madam Clerk, and I stand for any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Hanson?
I'm, so I'm a little confused here. You're asking for an additional million besides what's already in your budget?
Yes, because that is the budgeted amount from the MOUs. So the Secretary of State has already agreed to send us that money, and so we need to budget it as, to make the accounting work. So that's already money that we're expected to get from the fall election and then this primary.
And so, is it increasing our budget?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hanson, it's increasing the budget authority in total for the county, under the Bureau of Elections.
Okay, do you have a budget for this? Million dollars? Or was that part of?
It's part of the MOU, so it's our regular local election expenses and our primary election expenses. So there are certain things that are covered by the statute, our workers, our overtime, our vehicles, certain election notices, those are all covered. So the way it works is they, we sign an MOU, they send us the initial money, and then any of, any difference above and beyond, because we had additional expenses, then the Secretary of State reimburses us for the difference. But we do actually get that chunk of money already before the election begins. And so, in order to have the buying power of that money, we have to increase the budget in order to utilize that funding.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, as part of the MOU, the Secretary of State actually advances the county the funds for the election costs. The clerk's existing budget- The Clerk's existing budget was able to absorb a lot of the, the 2023 regular local election costs. There, we estimated today with that, where, we don't have specific budget reports for the timeframe from when we believed all costs related to fiscal, to the 2023 regular local election were all accounted for prior to when the primary election costs started to come in. But we estimated about 200, about $200,000 in deficit line items in the Clerk's budget as a result of costs absorbed by the county for the regular, the regular local election during the fall of '23. The cost for the primary, for the 2024 primary election was, I don't want to say, I'm not positive, Madam Clerk, but I'm not sure how much of those costs were already included in the Bureau of Elections' budget for fiscal year 25. So this money will increase, the funding for the $600,000 will actually increase actual, the budget for the expenditures, with, using the resources from the Secretary of State to fund the primary election, which was estimated at about $800,000 for this, for this primary.
In addition to the other money we've already gotten?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hanson, yes.
So, but that's for three elections. For the 2022 primary, they only advanced us a small amount. And then based on the fact that Sandoval and some other counties spent more, then we actually got more as a difference, or we, they're agreeing to give us more as a difference. The general election, we're still waiting on the final payment. And then 2023 regular local election, we're waiting on that final payment. So they advanced us quite a bit of money, but then because of election costs that are, we're under the umbrella of reimbursable costs, and they've actually asked for a lot of data, so we've been trying to figure out how to create those reports with finance, and that's why we're breaking out some of the line items in our budget, so that way we can do better accounting of what are reimbursable costs in certain line items and what are non-reimbursable costs in the line items.
So you're working to get data for, like, how many people use the drop boxes?
Well, it's more like, actually, the big challenge has been payroll. So it's breaking out the data for payroll for each of the polling, because we don't track necessarily, the way that finance tracks isn't what the Secretary of State wants, so we've been working with finance to get the reporting, how they want us to report. I think we've sent them two or three versions of, you know, and then they ask us for more data, and we're trying to figure out how to get the reports. Once we've kind of settled on a, with them, on what those reports should look like, then our breaking it out by line item should make it easier for us to then report and then get the reimbursement more quickly.
So you're gonna also try and get data for, like, this is the first year we've used Nancy Rodriguez?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so how many people are gonna vote there? How many employees do we have there? How many machines do we have there?
Yep.
What's the cost benefit?
Right, that's exactly right. And then we, we actually assess in the Clerk's Office, you know, based on how many voters, you know, did people utilize it, did they report they liked using it? If, you know, because there's not necessarily going to be a contested primary overlap between that Senate district, again, because the last person held that seat for 29 years, and the commission seat, you know, we may not utilize Nancy Rodriguez again. This election, it made sense because this is the primary that, who gets that seat tends to be decided, and those are overlapping seats in, where that just, that polling site would make sense.
What about the community college?
Community college, we've had a lot of overwhelming positive support in trying to get young voters to vote, so the community college is actually becoming more popular, even between the last election, which is the first one we used it, and already people are inquiring when it's gonna be opening. So that, that polling site, we're hoping to see more people voting, and also because that neighborhood on Commissioner Hughes's side of town is growing, I do think that's going to be a more popular early voting site. Nancy Rodriguez, we just have to wait and see.
Right, so, but, you know, like, how many years have you been using the secure drop boxes now?
We, the first secure drop boxes were installed in 2021, and they are available, I think, at eight locations, and they are becoming more popular as people learn about them.
So how many drop boxes do we have?
Eight, and then one in the, one in the actual physical Clerk's Office through the wall.
So we only have eight secure drop boxes. I thought you had more.
Well, we have, so, there's a difference in the law, so there's two kinds of drop boxes. The ones that are in the polling sites are drop boxes, but they close, you know, because it's when the poll workers are there. So within the polling sites, we have drop boxes within each of the polling sites, all 33 on Election Day, or at all the polling sites. But the ones that are outside, monitored 24 hours and secure with video and all the other gadgets we have on them, we only have eight of those.
Okay.
We're actually the most in the state, though.
Right, I was gonna ask you, how many did Burnaleo have?
Two, and they're not drive-up.
So, I mean, I'm just kind of wondering why we need another million dollars for three weeks?
Well, it's not that it's a million dollars for three weeks, it's so that we can actually move the money around, so we're kind of, we're kind of overextended on some of our line items, so when we build up our funding capacity, then we can start, right, submit, we can start paying the POs that we have outstanding from the reimbursements.
Okay, well, I would, I would hope that the rest of the commission and myself would really like to see data for what, what we're getting. I mean, I think that that is really important to us, to know if these investments, you know, like, we all want secure elections, we all want really valid, good numbers, but we also want the data. We want to know if we're expending, you know, excess money, and we have 20 workers or 10 workers at one polling place, and we're getting five people voting there.
Yes.
And I think those are the kind of things that I'm concerned about, to make sure that we're actually using our resources to the most advantage that we can possibly use.
Well, so, when we are dealing with elections, unfortunately, not even pass-through or throughput numbers is actually the number. When we do that resolution in the, at the odd numbered years in July, we actually have to have a voting convenience center for every 10 precincts. So some of our rural precincts, we will see polling sites that are not very well utilized because most people are voting after work, and typically downtown, so that's one of the reasons why we opened Carlos Gilbert, which is one of our most popular polling sites. Even though we already have Monizuma, because Monizuma has reached capacity, we had to open up Carlos Gilbert, and so that's technically extra, but because of the number of voters that we're seeing, and we don't want to have long lines, we ended up needing, because, you know, spatial is how the polling sites are divided up, not necessarily by throughput, so, you know, even though we've produced, even though we have data that suggests rural polling sites are not that popular, like, for instance, Galistao-Stanley, because of the way that the statute, where we have to have at least one voting convenience center per 10 precincts, you end up seeing polling sites that are out in the outskirts, that are not as well utilized as the ones in the middle of town. But the reality is, is that this is money that's being reimbursed, so it's not money that we're spending, it's just because of the funding capacity, we have to increase in order to be able to spend the reimbursement, essentially.
Anyhow, I mean, I think it's really important to have the rural voting location like Galistao, when I think somebody, one time, you're talking about closing it, you know, people were really unhappy, so rural voting sites, you know, especially since Santa Fe County is such a big county, and dispersed is important, but also, you know, like, the community college is two miles away from the fairgrounds.
Yes, and actually, fairgrounds is very, very busy as well, so, you know, and it's actually harder to find more polling sites, more south side of town, to find places to have voting. There is not as much, much infrastructure on the south side of town, so to find a site that it could be utilized for the full length of early voting has actually been a challenge for us. It is one of the reasons why sometimes we use churches for early voting, because we cannot find a public building in order to have early voting, that full three weeks of early voting, expanded early voting.
Okay, well, I guess, I, what I want is, I want to see the data. I want to know if we're getting our bang for our buck. Yeah, and so that's what I'm requesting. I don't know how, exactly how to request that, but I'll let other commissioners speak to some of these issues.
Okay, Commissioner Hamilton?
Thank you. And, yeah, I would totally support, like, when you stand up there and explain some of the things you've seen that, that makes sense, but you have it in your head, it would, it would be great, like, at the end of the voting, to actually see the numbers with all the sites and wait times and, you know, the, the appropriate stats that give us a chance, that would be fabulous. Do you, is there a concern about spending this money before the deadline? I'm, I mean, my understanding, I was a little confused too, but, you know, budgets are confusing, but that this is something the Secretary of State is funding, funding you for, good to use it, right?
Right.
Is, but is there, one, is there a concern about spending it by the deadline? And, two, is there a concern that, is there any concern about their approving what we spend it on? Like, they front us the money, but don't, do they have a post facto approval thing or something? That might have been a misunderstanding I had, but...
So we have to send them a report of everything we spent, and then, you know, there's certain categories of things that we're allowed to spend and not spend, and of course, they review it. I think what they're discovering is that because of all the new election laws that have come into place, elections are far more expensive than they thought. It is one of the reasons why the legislature has now made a $15 million fund that is renewable every year, so that way they can fund the elections, the money goes out to the counties, there's a, you know, checking their, our data, their data, to make sure what we are spending our money on is, and what we're reporting is, is what we're supposed to be spending that money on by statute and administrative rule. And then that money actually gets recharged essentially every year, so that way, because around the state, every county has seen increased election costs. I think Burnaleo County is spending somewhere near 4.5 million every election, trying to administer elections, so it's, the cost is going up, same-day voter registration agents, all of the traveling for drop boxes, things like that, it's, it's becoming more, you know, with all the new features we're adding to elections, there, the cost has gone up particularly with labor, it's one of the reasons why our, our office is trying to streamline a lot of the labor-intensive processes, to make that faster and not as much overtime, things like that. And I do think, you know, as we see more and more people moving towards permanent absentee, as some of those precincts start to have a higher proportion of people voting permanent absentee, we will not need as many polling sites because, you know, people will be voting absentee, so we don't need to have, you know, they'll drop them, they'll drop their ballots, and then we'll, we'll be converting to a more absentee process, so...
Right, so you don't have too many concerns that, of the, as Secretary of State approval after the fact, they'll front us the money, and you don't have concerns that they're gonna, like, disapprove large chunks of what we budgeted this for?
Certain, we're, we're learning, right, certain things they're not approving, but because of all of the demands of elections, and it's particularly labor, labor is expensive, we're not seeing disapproval of, you know, those broad categories, nitpicky things here and there, but not, not...
Because that would fall back to the, have to be approved from the general fund if that gets disapproved here.
So we're not seeing big, massive amounts of disapprovals, we're seeing, you know, small things here and there, so...
And you're, you're tracking the things that are, so is there a concern about, I mean, the election is gonna take place before the end of June, which is the spending, the spending date, right?
Yes.
But that leaves three weeks to get it all buttoned up. Do we have concerns about that? Spending a million dollars in five weeks?
We have to...
Six weeks, whatever it is, six weeks?
People were doing it as removing money across.
Okay, I mean, that's a finance, whatever it is, I'll just...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hamilton, the budget adjustment will actually increase specific lines, as noted within the bar, which, as Madam Clerk mentioned, a big portion's gonna be related to wages for, for the election workers.
Okay.
So we are increasing the budget. We have seen spending because they needed to get to prepare for the primary election, bringing on staff, early supply, stuff like that. I'm not sure, I know that the estimated budget that was provided today is $800,000 for the primary election. Anything above and beyond that, though, while, while the agreement does provide that we could provide that information to Secretary of State, we don't have yet a guarantee that any additional costs above and beyond that will be covered by Secretary of State, so there's still a risk that the county will have to absorb some of those costs that aren't covered. And right now, from the past elections, I think the primary, the 2022 primary, was that the first MOU that we received?
Yes.
So the primary for 2022 was the first year that we started to receive funding from Secretary of State. Right now, there is about $900,000 of additional costs that the county has absorbed, that we're still hoping that the, that the Secretary of State will reimburse us for that. Madam Clerk is correct, we're seeing a lot more of our costs related, related to elections and the election workers. I know that she's also, her office has been making improvements, as she mentioned, in technology, trying to use a scanning, a machine to help count versus having individuals count the pieces of ballots, eliminating errors and stuff like that, but we are increasing, and as I'm rambling, I apologize, I'm not sure if I answered your question, Commissioner Hamilton.
Well, I have, there is a little bit of confusion, because it, on the surface, this, it makes sense, if we're getting to budget money, that extra money that the Secretary of State is, is supplying, right? Because elections are expensive, and if it covers stuff we need covered, what was a little less clear was, like, how that jobs with what was in the budget from, you know, last week and, and whatnot, but...
Mr...
Despite that complexity, all I was really asking was, are we gonna be able to spend it? And not, you know, because it's, a billion dollars is a lot of money in this, you know?
Right.
Or not, I mean, in some ways, it's not, but...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hamilton, the Clerk's original budget for fiscal year 25, with some budget adjustments that were done through an internal, an internal bar at mid, at mid-year, was able to absorb quite a bit of the election from, from the fall of '23, the regular local election. We don't have enough funding or budget to be able to absorb the costs related to the primary election now '24. So by budgeting at least the $600,000 or the MOU for the '24 primary, we would need that additional funds in order for the Clerk's Office to be able to, to fund the primary election.
And this is distinct from next year's budget, nevertheless, because this is this fiscal year?
Yeah.
So it's entirely in this fiscal year?
Basically, we need to generate POs, and we don't have any spending capacity to do that, so we want to move the money into the line item, so we can spend the money and then charge it against the reimbursement. That's where we're at.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I would just, you know, note with the agreement of the county clerk, is we're trying to isolate those costs for statewide elections differently in the next fiscal year, so that their, their own cost center, and they're not intermingled with what I'll call the annual operating cost of the Bureau of Elections. So I think it'll be more transparent to everyone. And, you know, as Yvonne mentioned, and Madam Clerk mentioned as well, you know, the, the real risk, I, you know, risk in quotes, it's more the delta between, you know, what the Secretary of State advances and what is spent on the election, because anything above what they've advanced, you know, per the MOUs that I've seen, are not guaranteed, and there have to be eligible expenses, and money has to be available. So I think as, you know, the Clerk works with the board to establish that budget for any given election, that's really where you're gonna want to focus, is, you know, if we spend this amount that's in excess of what has been advanced by the Secretary of State, everybody do that, knowing that that could in fact be county contribution towards the election. And so, again, by isolating that in its own cost center, we're... And so, again, by isolating that in its own cost center, we're just hoping to be able to, you know, to have that dialogue in a way that's very easy for everyone to see. I hope that helps.
It really does, and it makes it clear in what ways having post-election summary of information, of data, will help justify it and do a basis for subsequent years, so...
And you'll see that in the primary, that was the first one, you know, they only gave us $188,000, and right, and we've, every election, we've learned, okay, for a county this size, we're about $600,000 to $800,000, depending on, you know, what kind of election it is. So the Secretary of State is also learning, you know, how much they need to advance to us in order to make that, because we're right in line with Sandoval, we're right in line with other counties about our size in terms of spend, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Yvonne. So, sort of related to that, is it a formula, or is this based on a proposal that you made to the Secretary of State?
Well, I think many of the clerks and I, after that first election, said, this is not enough for all the things that you're asking us to do. So, you know, what we're seeing is, you know, first, there was a huge increase, the second one, and then there's been a slight increase to the third election. So I think we're going to find some kind of equilibrium in the next, you know, election or two, that it's going to be about, we're going to spend about as much as they give us, so... But as far as I know, there's no, whatever formula they used for the first election was, you know, almost all the counties asked for more money.
So, but a million, $500,000 or $50,000 is based on a formula of number of voters, number of precincts, number of, do you have any, and it didn't, it's not their formula, or it's a black box formula in terms of what they come up? And it's not based on a number that you put forth to the Secretary of State? It is just, here's our number, figure out how to spend it?
We say, we say, we don't, you know, we say with the other larger counties, this was not enough money, we need to increase how much money we have. And so then I think they probably said, okay, this is how much, it seems to be that this is how much you spent, and then they took 15% away from what they gave us for the next election. I don't know if that's what they did, but it's a guess.
Okay, you know, it's nice when it's reimbursable, so it's easy, it's not necessarily out of our pocket, per se. But we still have to be responsible with money, it's state money. So whether it goes through the Secretary of State or through the county coffers, we need to be responsible about that. You know, one word of caution, let's, you know, scrutinize things that are definitely not going to be reimbursable, let's make sure we don't overspend and so we don't overshoot it, and that it comes out of our pocket nonetheless. And then, actually, is a learning experience for you and for us up here, as Commissioner Hanson had mentioned, let's try to figure out how to be the most effective and efficient with this, right? And so if we're doing an amazing job with drop boxes, great, let's tell that story and show how many people are doing that, and maybe we need more, maybe we need less, maybe, you know, maybe the value per vote is so much higher than extended early voting, which seems to be a very high cost, and I think we've had conversations about the inability to find staff on a temporary, you know, temporary workers, you know, let's find the right balance for future elections. This one's already baked, you know, early voting's already open, but we need to, going forward, figure out the right balance, make sure that we target that and try to, you know, yes, let's go get as many people voting. Let's make sure that this is not Espaniola with 6% turnout, right? And so whatever we can do to make it easier and make people realize that their vote matters and they need to get out, and we've got three different ways to make it easier, four different ways to make it easy for them, but they need to show up and do one of them at least.
So this is the number one turnout county, and I think it's, really, it's the labor cost that is, you know, 80% of our costs because of the reality of if you want to hire temp workers, you have to pay them, you know, $22, $24 an hour to get anybody, so...
I appreciate that, but I wonder if the drop boxes are the ways that things are going, or permanent absentee ballots, or whatever, you know, are there going to be ways that are much more efficient than having so many clustered early voting things? Maybe it's all about Election Day, maybe there's a different scenario, maybe it's a week, so it's not two weeks, I don't know if we're allowed to do those things. No, okay, so, good idea, not so good, yeah. But, you know, let's try to be as efficient as possible, and I know you're a data person, so collect as much as possible, let's use this as a, as a learning experience, so that, you know, next time you can go advise the Secretary of State, this is what we think is the best practices. And if we're the leading turnout county, good for us, then let's lead by example and let's give those lessons learned out there.
I mean, so 50% of our voters vote early in Santa Fe County, if not more, depending on the election. So if we're going to be able to capture more people voting by absentee, right, with some of our automated processes, what we would have to do is advocate for changing the statute on that density of the voting convenience center. Once we can change where, you know, let's say 50% of the registered voters are registered permanent absentee, we already know we're going to send them a ballot, then we don't need to, you know, have as much of a proportion of that counting towards the density of voting convenience centers. That is one of the things I think the clerks would support, and something I think, you know, the county, the state is moving towards, right? As you get a higher proportion of permanent absentee, you don't need as many in-person voting locations, which means less, I mean, there's going to be labor in terms of picking up from drop boxes, there's going to be labor in terms of absentee board, but it's going to be far less than having to staff for three weeks on an early voting site.
No doubt. Thank you. Generally in support of this, just want this to be a learning experience and go collect data, go collect votes first, but then report the data.
Yeah, I just want to reinforce the idea of giving us the data at the end of, because I appreciate all the efforts being made to bring out people and make it convenient, and then let's see, you know, how many people voted each place, et cetera, et cetera. So Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. So the county does not have an endless supply of money?
Yes.
So I think that's a really important statement to think about, you know, that if we're going to have to absorb some of this cost, we need to know that upfront, yeah. And I'm not hearing that at all, I'm not hearing what we're going to have to absorb and what the Secretary of State is actually going to pay. I don't see the numbers, you know, I don't see actual budget that's clear to me. But I would, if we're going to approve this resolution, I would like to add that something about that data will be presented at the end of the election, or, you know, that we'll see the different categories, like how many people voted at Nancy Rodriguez, how many people voted at such and such, how many workers worked at these sites, what was the, what was actually the cost of the vote? You know, how many drop boxes, how many people used those drop boxes during that time? I mean, you know, that's, I might not be covering all of the data that needs to be covered, but I know from myself and Commissioner Hamilton, we have constantly talked about collecting data. And so I would like to add to this resolution a phrase or something, can I do this, County Attorney? Can I add something about data? I'm just making sure I'm not violating anything.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hanson, you know, if you wanted to amend your approval in that way, I suppose, yeah, we can make that amendment.
Okay. So I make this, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution with an amendment that data will be presented to the board at the end of the, of the end of the primary election cycle.
I'll second it, but I may amend your motion if I just, to be a little more clear, if I may?
Is it friendly?
I hope so. So, yes, to encourage the data collection and that it be reported to us within 90 days of the, no?
The election may not be over by then, depending on recount and recheck. So we still have data, we still have poll workers sometimes that are working for us well after the fact because of the post-election audits.
Within 90 days, you couldn't get it back to us?
Yeah, because we would have all of the labor that we're doing, where we have to have an election board convened in order to do the auditing process. So we can do it, once we've completed audit, we could save the next meeting after audit, you know?
Okay, well, okay, the meeting following the audit to include, to include data for drop boxes, early and extended voting sites, and budgets for staffing and operational details in a per-vote and per-site scenario.
Basically, the cost of early voting.
Yeah, in different formats, not just as a bulk number, but as drop boxes and early voting sites and...
Labor.
Labor, yep.
Does that seem reasonable, County Clerk?
Sure. I always say my vote's worth, you know, priceless, but yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, motion seconded by Green, as amended. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's time for our hour and a half break, so let's take a 10-minute break and then come back.
Mr. Chair, would you like a resolution number on that one? I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Get our resolution number, and then we'll take a break, yes.
2024-06-9.
Okay.
David Crispin with the United States Marine Corps.
Jacqueline Beam, 519th Military Intelligence, U.S. Army.
Matthew Hernandez, United States Navy.
Keith Claxton, United States Navy.
Paul Portillo, United States Navy.
Robert Griego, U.S. Navy, Operation Specialist.
Chris Oakley, United States Navy, United States Marine Corps, State of New Mexico, Army National Guard.
Melinda Medlin, United States Army.
Norman Adagod, U.S. Army National Guard.
Raven Nieto, United States Army.
Oscar Marc Melopis, United States Marine Corps.
Martin, United States Army, retired.
Valentino Baca, United States Marine Corps.
Jeff Fallgate, United States Air Force.
Kenneth Kimparo, United States Army, and as well as New Mexico National Guard, combined service 24 years.
Santa Fe County is hiring. Every Tuesday, Public Works holds a rapid hire event at 102 Grant Avenue at 8:30 a.m. Also, the Correctional Facility holds a rapid hire event every Tuesday at 9 a.m. That is at 28 Camino Hosticia. We have great jobs, great pay, and great benefits. Come work with us.
Why do you work for Santa Fe County?
For my family.
For your safety.
For you.
For my community.
For the public.
For the community.
For the retirement.
To serve my community.
For my family.
For the outdoors.
David Crispin with the United States Marine Corps.
Jacqueline Beam, 519th Military Intelligence, U.S. Army.
Matthew Hernandez, United States Navy.
Keith Claxton, United States Navy.
Paul Portillo, United States Navy.
Robert Griego, U.S. Navy, Operation Specialist.
Chris Oakley, United States Navy, United States Marine Corps, State of New Mexico, Army National Guard.
Melinda Medlin, United States Army.
Norman Adagod, U.S. Army National Guard.
Raven Nieto, United States Army.
Oscar Marc Melopis, United States Marine Corps.
Martin, United States Army, retired.
Valentino Baca, United States Marine Corps.
Jeff Fallgate, United States Air Force.
Kenneth Kimparo, United States Army, and as well as New Mexico National Guard, combined service 24 years.
Santa Fe County is hiring. Every Tuesday, Public Works holds a rapid hire event at 102 Grant Avenue at 8:30 a.m. Also, the Correctional Facility holds a rapid hire event every Tuesday at 9 a.m. That is at 28 Camino Hosticia. We have great jobs, great pay, and great benefits. Come work with us.
Why do you work for Santa Fe County?
For my family.
For your safety.
For you.
For my community.
For the public.
For the community.
For the retirement.
To serve my community.
For my family.
For the outdoors.
David Crispin with the United States Marine Corps.
Jacqueline Beam, 519th Military Intelligence, U.S. Army.
Matthew Hernandez, United States Navy.
Keith Claxton, United States Navy.
Paul Portillo, United States Navy.
Robert Griego, U.S. Navy, Operation Specialist.
Chris Oakley, United States Navy, United States Marine Corps, State of New Mexico, Army National Guard.
Melinda Medlin, United States Army.
Norman Adagod, U.S. Army National Guard.
Raven Nieto, United States Army.
Oscar Marc Melopis, United States Marine Corps.
Martin, United States Army, retired.
Valentino Baca, United States Marine Corps.
Jeff Fallgate, United States Air Force.
Kenneth Kimparo, United States Army, and as well as New Mexico National Guard, combined service 24 years.
Santa Fe County is hiring. Every Tuesday, Public Works holds a rapid hire event at 102 Grant Avenue at 8:30 a.m. Also, the Correctional Facility holds a rapid hire event every Tuesday at 9 a.m. That is at 28 Camino Hosticia. We have great jobs, great pay, and great benefits. Come work with us. Why do you work for Santa Fe County?
For my family.
For your safety.
For you.
For my community.
For the public.
For the community.
For the retirement.
To serve my community.
For my family.
David Crispin with the United States Marine Corps.
Jacqueline Beam, five nineteenth Military Intelligence, U.S. Army.
Matthew Hernandez, United States Navy.
Keith Claxton, United States Navy.
Paul Portillo, United States Navy.
Robert Griego, U.S. Navy, Operation Specialist.
Chris Oakley, United States Navy, United States Marine Corps, State of New Mexico, Army National Guard.
Melinda Medlin, United States Army.
Norman Adagod, U.S. Army National Guard.
Raven Nieto, United States Army.
Oscar Martin Lopez, United States Marine Corps.
Martin, United States Army, retired.
Valentino Baca, United States Marine Corps.
Jeff Fallgate, United States Air Force.
Kenneth Quintaro, United States Army, and as well as New Mexico National Guard, combined service 24 years.
Santa Fe County is hiring. Every Tuesday, Public Works holds a rapid hire event at 102 Grant Avenue at 8:30 a.m. Also, the correctional facility holds a rapid hire event every Tuesday at 9 a.m. That is at 28 Camino Hosticia.
...of the draft 2024 Economic Development Strategic Plan. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Juan Torres. I am the Economic Development Manager. The Economic Development Division, the item before you, excuse me, is the presentation of the updated draft Economic Development Strategic Plan. The Economic Development Division works with economic and planning systems to produce an update to the 2014 Economic Development Strategic Plan. The plan that's going to be presented to you emphasizes economic clusters and targeted industries, with a focus for economic development actions that will support economic development in Santa Fe and the region. The major areas of focus in the plan include infrastructure needs, updated target industries, strategies, and recommended actions. This is an informational item, but the relationship of the plan to the statute, the Local Economic Development Act, the plan enables the county to engage in the activities allowable under the LIDA Act. So, once we update the plan, we will be bringing forth an updated LIDA ordinance, and at that time, we will present the final plan and ordinance for a formal adoption. I'd like to turn it over to Daniel Guman, who is the Economic Planning and Systems Consultant.
Thank you, Chairman Hughes and members of the commission. Again, my name's Dan Guman. I'm a principal with Economic and Planning Systems. We have an office in Denver. I'm the senior principal in the office. We provide, we provide a full range of economic analysis and development services, including preparing economic development plans. We've worked for the county a number of times in the past, including most recently preparing an impact fee study, and before that, the capital improvement plan and infrastructure build out plan. We were a subconsultant on those projects as well. The, as Juan mentioned, the plan objectives, the reasons for the plan, first and foremost, to address the county, the county's commission's strategic plan goals for promoting a sustainable and equitable community, including the subgoals of maximizing economic development tools and programs, implementing and enhancing the county's targeted industry clusters, incentivizing green development and sustainable job growth, developing an arts and culture council, supporting workforce training, and developing the county's broadband plan. It also, in terms of objective for the plan, updates the 2014 Economic Development Plan. It meets the state requirements for LIDA funding eligibility, and then finally fulfills the economic development element of the Strategic Growth Management Plan of the county. The, just a brief outline of the plan document, you have a copy of the draft plan, I believe in your packet, and we welcome any comments and additions to that before the preparation of the final plan, as Juan mentioned. The plan includes an economic profile, a brief economic profile, an analysis of infrastructure needs, what the critical issues are that impact the county's economic growth and vitality, including specifically broadband and fiber optic facilities, affordable housing, workforce development, and then wastewater and water infrastructure for urban development. It covers the targeted industries that are identified in the plan, including the six industries listed below. It covers funding and financing sources and strategies, and then finally, strategies and actions for implementing and realizing economic development opportunities in the county. The, you see from this graphic that the commission's strategic plan goals are oversee the plan. The plan provides priorities in terms of public investments in the infrastructure areas and other investments, and that those investments allow for targeted growth and diversification in the targeted industries of the, that are identified in the plan. So, in terms of... Trying to get this thing to advance. Okay, I guess it's just a little sensitive. Infrastructure needs, the four broad categories of broadband. The county strategic plan and the Strategic Growth Management Plan identified high-speed broadband as the number one infrastructure priority in the county. It's essential to both businesses and residents in the county, and less, at least at the date of this plan, less than 2% of households in the county have high-speed fiber. Affordable housing, the county adopted an affordable housing plan and ordinance in 2023. The strategies, the first strategy is to increase incentives for affordable housing, extending the inclusionary housing ordinance to all developments and to remove barriers to affordable projects in the county. And I think most importantly, from the economic development perspective, is to recognize that affordable housing is an economic development concern. Without a local workforce, you do have economic development issues. Which way should I be pointing this thing? Okay, I'm just, where's the, do you know where the computer is? In terms of workforce, support the education and training programs, especially in targeted industries, and recognize that Pro-Tech, the Professional Readiness and Technical Experience for Careers Program at the community college is one of the most successful programs for workforce development in the county. I mentioned infrastructure. In terms of supporting growth in SDA 1 in the, in the growth management plan, urban utilities are needed for urban density development to occur. The county's had a difficult time getting higher density development, particularly commercial development within the SDA 1 area in the county. And the biggest impediment is the lack of trunk, water, and sewer lines to support this, this level of urban development. Is there another clicker by any chance? It's just not advancing. Okay, it's, all right. I, I mentioned the six target industries that are covered in the plan. Value-added agriculture is the first, opportunities related to industries that promote the county's agricultural productions and ecotourism. Arts, culture, and creative industry, supporting existing arts organization and building infrastructure to support them. Outdoor recreation, recreation activities and events on public lands, as well as the manufacturing and distribution of outdoor-related equipment. Film and digital media, national and film, studio productions and post-production facilities. Green industries and alternative energy, renewable energy, recycling and conservation technology, and then lastly, health and wellness, including both traditional health-related industries, as well as alternative wellness and treatment facilities within the county. You going to advance it for me? Go ahead, go ahead and just advance it for me, and I'll, I'll, I'll let you know. So, funding and financing sources, as mentioned earlier, the LIDA or the Local Economic Development Act is, is the primary source of funding for a lot of the county's economic development activities. It allows the county to provide public funds for economic development and not violate the state anti-donation clause. And as mentioned earlier, it requires the county to adopt this economic development plan, as well as an ordinance, which will be drafted over the next two or three months. Other New Mexico Economic Development Division grants include the Outdoor Recreation Division, the Film Office, and the Creative Industries Division, all of which provide a series of various grants for some of the programs that are, that are recommended in the plan. Other state sources of funding include tax increment development districts, PIDs, infrastructure development zones, IRBs, and new market tax credits. Next slide. And then the various federal funding sources supporting economic development that can be tapped into as well, including the Economic Development Administration Grants for Public Works, economic adjustment, revolving loans, and, and preparation of, of these types of economic development plans. Community development grants, RACE grants, and, and other SBA programs that support the development, small business development and expansion within the county. Next slide. And then finally, from local funding sources, including the county's capital improvement program, and then business development partnerships and incentives. So, the, next slide, please. So, the, the bulk of the rest of the plan is structured around strategies and actions for implementing the infrastructure investments and developing target industry, taking advantage of target industry opportunities in the county. So, starting with infrastructure, the first strategy is to maintain existing infrastructure and support the implementation of critical infrastructure deployment plans. So, identify and secure capital funding for infrastructure projects, provide funding and financial support to private development projects that, that include infrastructure that can be taken advantage of by the larger community and by other projects, and to coordinate concurrent infrastructure deployment in county public work projects, kind of the, the formula of dig once for installation of, of various types of infrastructure. Second, to complete a network of high-speed and affordable broadband throughout the county. The county is in the process of, of working towards a broadband development grant currently. In terms of other strategies, continue to support broadband deployment through ReadyNet and complete the Strategic Broadband Development Plan for the county that, again, I mentioned the funding for is in, in process currently. Thirdly, create financial and other incentive programs to support and encourage affordable housing in the county. The Housing Division is responsible for the housing, but the Economic Development Division can provide financial assistance in the way of various, of bringing state funding for various housing programs, including down payment efficient assistance programs, and creating a program to allow the purchase of affordable housing to, to account for the cost of green code adjustments at the county level. Next slide. In terms of strategies and actions for the target industry, starting with value-added agriculture, the first strategy is to leverage the aggregate website and work with organizations to build a network for connecting small area farms, providing locally grown food and produce to local restaurants and value-added manufacturers. So, strengthen leakages between food processors to support the creation of value-added industries, assist local growers in accessing capital for growing agricultural-related businesses, and support the development of food incubator facilities and infrastructure designed to launch restaurant and food-related value-added agricultural businesses. Secondly, work with the county, with the community college and other organizations to develop programs that support the development of agriculturally-based businesses. Next slide. So, the second, or, yes, the second target industry area is arts, culture, and creative industries. The first strategy is expand arts, culture, and creative industries activities within the county. First recommendation, I believe it's in your strategic plan, is to create an arts and culture council, work with, and also work with community arts groups to develop programs and facilities to support new and expanded creative industries within the county. Second, to provide economic assistance to projects and other initiatives, expand the presence of the arts and culture sector. Support the development of arts attractions and events in the Santa Fe area. Support training and professional developments for the work, arts and culture workforce throughout the county. Encourage arts and cultural amenities to be accessible to all residents, and support the creation of arts and cultural districts and other designations where appropriate. Next slide. So, the third industry cluster, target industry cluster... So, the third industry cluster, target industry cluster is outdoor education. The strategies include market a wide range of outdoor recreation activities that Santa Fe area has to offer, and that involves leveraging existing assets to improve the county's hiking and biking trail system, expand the network of mountain bike trails and amenities, partner with other communities in northern New Mexico to develop a regional approach to developing and marketing outdoor recreation assets, and improve available information about the connections between trailheads and lodging and neighborhoods and entertainment areas to enhance the resident and visitor experience and reduce auto use. Second, to provide economic assistance to new or expanding companies specializing in outdoor recreation gear and apparel. So, capitalize on the economic, the state's Economic Development Outdoor Recreation Division to support the recruitment of outdoor recreation businesses, recruitment and development of new businesses in that area, and support the development of events and conferences related to outdoor recreation. Next. Film and digital media, already a, a strong industry within the county, but there are opportunities for going beyond the existing film studios and outdoor stages to, to support their retention. The industry's gotten much more competitive at the state level with Albuquerque developing several new studios, so it's, it's important for the county to continue to support its existing facilities and allow them to grow and expand. I think there's an effort to try and extend fiber optic down to some of the outdoor stage areas that will allow those facilities to be better utilized in terms of building post-production film facilities in the county, which is a current lack. There's, we have the studios, we have the outdoor stages, we don't have the post-production facilities. Next slide. So, green industries and alternative energy, the county should support a comprehensive program to expand green building practices in the construction industry, support the development of solar arrays, build partnerships to increase access to green job training, support grid modernization and transmission projects. I think, I think what we're going to be seeing, or what we are starting to see in this part of the country is more battery storage projects to extend the, the usefulness of alternative energy on non, non-peak production hours. The county will promote, secondly, the county will promote programs for energy conservation and recycling to continue to reduce waste and conserve existing resources, including increasing EV charging, increasing support to businesses and recycling, support water sustainability and efficiency programming, particularly in agricultural production, and attract and support the development of businesses that can utilize recycled materials in their, in their production. Next. Health and wellness, the sixth of the targeted industries identified. Support educational institutions and programs that educate and train the healthcare workforce, and then specifically under that, leverage EDA-funded workforce integration network project, programs. And then, secondly, collaborate with the alternative healing industry to promote Santa Fe as a health and wellness destination. The next slide. So, strategies related to funding and financing, which is a major area of, of the work program for the Economic Development Division. Seek additional funding for the target industry clusters and high priority infrastructure projects as, as I have previously presented here. Seek LITA funds for eligible employer recruitment and expansion. Explore the potential opportunity for a county media park and seek infrastructure, additional infrastructure financing for broadband throughout the county. Second, seek, create a dedicated funding source for business development and, and projects and programs. Support broadband development through ReadyNet and complete the broadband development plan for the county. And then, thirdly, utilize LITA funds to support economic-based businesses located in or, or relocating to the county. And then, last slide. Conclusions. So, as, in, in, in summary, the economic development plan, the draft plan that is presented to you today, updates the policies, strategies, and actions that were identified. In the 2014 plan, it responds to changes in economic conditions over the last 10 years, including specifically post-COVID impacts on the county economy and the growth, and specifically the growing affordable housing crisis fed by escalating housing costs within the county and the lack of affordable housing production that, that the county is currently experiencing. And then, in terms of the work program, the Economic Development Division will continue to work with key stakeholders and regional partners throughout northern New Mexico in terms of ensuring that the use of resources is appropriate and not duplicative of other efforts, that the strategic goals in the plan continue to be aligned with the Board of County Commissioners' direction and their strategic plan, that regional collaborations and partnerships are maintained and expanded, and the existing relationships are leveraged to achieve the maximum return on investment. And then, finally, that the traditions, culture, and diversity of northern New Mexico are honored and expanded upon. So, thank you, Chairman Hughes and members of the commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Mr. Bustamante?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Chairman Hughes. The, some of this, and I get that this is an update, and what's troubling for me is that it's an update of things that have been discussed and have been on the same pieces of paper, or virtual pieces of paper for the last 20 years. And it is not a, a new objective to support alternative energy, green building, et cetera. And there has been some headway. I guess there's an element of frustration here, and I'm doing everything I can to say, this is great, I saw this 20 years ago. I saw essentially the same thing, with the exception of the charging station. And I think it's somewhat, with all due respect, naive to think that it's just wastewater that keeps us from having further development in some of our remote areas. When we look at where we can't have solar in our communities, and we look at where we don't have PNM or any other electrical services, it's not just about the infrastructure of water, wastewater. We're also looking at the dead zones because we don't really actually have the transformer capability, the infrastructure, to have solar set up in those areas. It's already peaked out through our public service, the Public Service Company of New Mexico. That being said, when we look at how and what, I, I go back to a conversation that we had when Bill Richardson passed away right here on this dais of be bold. With all due respect, I don't see anything bold in this. Like, it's got to go. I'm, I'm glad you came from Denver to tell us what we've been talking about for the last 20 years. That sounds insulting, I don't mean it that way, so I apologize. But what I really do or would love to see is then, then let's get it done. How do we make sure that we have the electrical capacity in these more remote areas where, frankly, when we talk about working with the community college, they have not ever had faculty who are willing to work with the agricultural systems that are already here? This is mount, it's, it's underinformed, it's naive to the extent of, we're looking at the assets, this looks like it'll work, onward ho, and we've been here before. So, it is a point of frustration, I'm going to apologize upfront for the emoting, but to the real end, what does it really take to get a dang microgrid out in the middle of nowhere so that we can plug a car in and keep moving? That's the kind of thing that needs to be in our plan. Otherwise saying, we'll support continued growth and development in this area, and we support the college's ability to do this, and I'm trying so hard not to yawn, but the good news is my adrenaline's so high that I'm not going to yawn, I'm going to go, what are we hearing again? Because I'm old now, I want to hear things that are happening or have happened since my hair's been turning gray. Like, we have opportunity that hasn't, everything here is good, it has been good, it is a great plan. I get that it's an updated plan. With all due respect, Economic Development Department, when are we going to stop planning and start doing? And that, I mean sincerely. I'm glad the value statements are good and clear here, our values are strong, they come out in the strategies, our values are good, but actionable items, that we are going to take action on something to actually be able to assure that our agricultural communities don't continue to be infiltrated with new big projects that are going to gobble up the water so that they can't actually continue to succeed. That hasn't been addressed in 20 years. So, there are absolute good identifiable things that need to be done. The word "actions" in the economic development plan, "updates, policies, strategies, and actions" is fluff. It's not even there, it's a cloud, it's not even a cloud, I don't even see it. And that troubles me. I would like to see, and I think we all would, something much more assertive in our ability to accomplish protection of our agricultural lands, ways that we are doing more than just talking about getting electrical services to these more remote areas. I'm hard pressed to think of what we could do next, and that's called bullshit, because the truth is, I sat at the community college when we could actually work with them to actually be responsive to the community. I begged that college to do so. I beg any entity who pays lip service to what we can do to the, for the communities to actually do it. So, I, I, I'm not going to apologize for my passion, I apologize for anything that comes off feeling personal, but it's not personal, it's personal for the people who live here and who are really looking for something that actually values the traditions, culture, and infrastructure that we have, and finds ways to actually do something about it. But I've read this report before, over numerous years, and onward ho. So, thank you, those are my comments. I'd like to see something far more actionable from a plan that is dated. I want to say I'm sorry, just because I was trained to apologize for everything, but I'm not going to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The only thing I would add is, is a plan can only go so far in terms of outlining recommended actions and strategies, whether they're new or, or repeated from 2014. I mean, I think there's a lot in here that's new, I think a lot is repeated because it hasn't happened, to your point. So, it's, from my perspective, it's all about the implementation, you know, and I don't know, that responsibility lies with a lot of parties, including, including this county's government, in terms of whether it's partly funding, it's partly coming up with the resources, but it's also partly coming up with the, the organizational wherewithal to implement, implement what, what I think most of us in this room agree, agree needs to be done. That's my only suggestion.
Mr. Chair, sir, I appreciate that, I do get that, and I guess if there's any frustration, it should be had amongst ourselves. So, our opportunities remain, and, you know, many of these things are in our, our strategic plan, so let's strategically do.
Commissioner Green.
Excuse me, Madam, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bustamante, I just also want to point out, similar to the Affordable Housing Plan, by adopting this plan, then it allows us to bring forward the exact programming and actionable resources and, and applying those resources. So, we adopted the Affordable Housing Plan, now we're doing the rehab program, et cetera, and that's the same kind of policy here. Your frustration is clearly stated and understood, but I just put that out there as well. Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, a lot of, yes, agreement with Commissioner Bustamante, and just to, maybe not apologize, but I did see her walk over and get caffeine before this meeting, so she was, I'm, decaf, ah, man, it's still where it's, all right. So, and I didn't get coffee, but I probably need some to talk about this. So, I appreciate her comments, and I almost wish that there were sort of three bold actions that we could really take, that show something deep and profound. And I like the idea that there's a broadband plan on here, and I'm working with the Broadband Working Group, and that's a priority of mine. But again, this is sort of a very upper-level thing, and I guess that's the intention of this, but little things. So, we talked about a population goal, and this is something that we're working on, but it should certainly be represented in this plan, which is, when we talk about equity in our community, and you're already working on it, but it should show up in here, because you should be working based on the plan. The example of that is Spanish language programs, right? A significant portion of our community is Spanish language immigrants or, or existing folks that have been here for years. And so, having Spanish language entrepreneurship and job training that is focused at that segment of the community should have a place in this, in this plan. Another area is given, you know, this plan should respond to the, the realities of our community. So, one of those that's in here is about housing, right? So, we talk about, oh, we need affordable housing. Well, we need to be very specific about what that means. And so, affordable housing is not just affordable housing, yes, it is housing affordability, but not just that, it is housing for workforce housing. Because if we are not making houses that are made for, targeted at our workforce, we're just making our housing for a bunch of second homeowners. That's the wrong type of housing, right? And if you're in Denver, you see how the mountain towns are great places for second homes, but they've just destroyed themselves by, you know, destroying or not supporting the, the workforce, right? And so, being very, very specific about what this spectrum of housing and which part of the spectrum we're targeting, workforce housing and public safety housing, right? Our civic housing for our, you know, public safety segment, first responders, our medical workers. Another thing that is true about our community, that we need to start to look at how we respond to it through economic development, is healthcare, we can be health and wellness, but this is not yoga studios for, I mean, yes, it is yoga studios for folks, but it is, more specifically, it is going to be childcare centers, so that we can get, you know, childcare, which is a big issue for lots of working families, and especially women, to, to have relief for them. And so, how do we integrate childcare into our economic development plan, and how into, we integrate it into our housing? So that when we do a multi, you know, multi-family development, that you're cutting down the distance that people have to travel, so a multi-family project that is meant for families has integrated childcare on the, on the site. So, a mom or a family member doesn't have to go pick up their kid from, from childcare if they're sick, the kid's already onsite and is able to not have to have that travel and that emergency transportation. And then, Santa Fe, you know, sadly, we don't have that many kids in this community, and we're sort of, you know, a, a community that is sort of aging past the kids, so, but the other side of that is parent care and senior care, right? So, it's not only childcare, but what I'm hearing from constituents is, is lots of people that are leaving the workforce at the prime of their working age to take care of their parents. Now, what is the response for that? That is types of businesses that can actually respond to that, that can free families from having to give up work, re-enter the workforce, and have suitable care for their, for their aging, for their elders and their aging family members. I think in the broadband portion of this, it's great to talk about the plan and to talk about ReadyNet, I think there's an opportunity to be specific about BEAD funding. I think there's an opportunity to be specific about BID funding and Connect New Mexico, and to leverage these federal funds and these state funds. So that is another comment, I have this on here. Another area, sorry, getting back to housing for a second. We have this problem, and we also have the potential to be part of the solution, not just in investing in the same old, same old, but maybe that one of our segments that we need to look at is housing innovation, right? And so is that the next generation of manufactured housing? Is that the next generation of housing technologies such as, you know, robotics, CNC routing, you know, all of these technologies that exist? And we have some companies that are already in this marketplace that are experimenting with this. Maybe they are the solution that can start here and build here. We solve our own problem, you know, we don't have to import the solution, we can solve our problem ourselves. Another area that we're pretty strong at, but we don't see as one of the segments that we should be supporting, in my opinion, is science and technology. You know, we have national labs here, about 60 or 70% of their portfolio are things that we don't want to support, but the other 20 or 30% of their portfolio are things that we wholeheartedly support. Things as environmental technologies, energy technologies other than nuclear, things like biotechnology. We should be leveraging these opportunities in a way to also make us a good partner with these labs and firms around town, but also to be part of, you know, it's much easier to leverage what we have as opposed to attract what doesn't already exist. Also in that space, all of these industries need investment. And so Santa Fe County can go in ways to try to create, you know, we talked about developing the workforce, no doubt we need to develop the workforce, we need to develop our investment community. And so that's whether we attract venture capital, we cultivate the angel network that is here, we have people with money, you know, we are very lucky and blessed to have some wealth in this community. And so how we deploy that locally is a great opportunity to leverage what we have and to make sure that we recognize that and cherish that. Again, to Commissioner Bustamante's comment about agricultural support, it's not only water, it is agricultural land. And so if we're willing to give up land for housing, because housing seems to be really important, but we're destroying farmland at the same time, that's like cutting off our nose to spite our face, right? We need to start to look at how do we balance this and do appropriate development where it's not agricultural land and we cherish that and preserve that, but we also have housing and development in those places. So making sure that we don't destroy our agricultural land and water resources as well. Again, one more thing, you know, the film industry, workforce development, I think we talked more specifically, or you spoke more specifically, about post-production and some of these things, but a lot of this goes to the workforce for these folks. And how do we, you know, amplify and invest in programs like IAIA or the community colleges' film school, or whatever hands-on programs with the unions to leverage the internship programs or whatever these programs that exist? Let's make them stronger and more robust so that our kids who want to stay here see an industry that they can get involved in and have the training for that, and especially film, because that's another aspect of that. Two more things, pardon me for going on, but you can tell that despite not having caffeine, I'm passionate about it. The-- a tool for buying local, you know, at the end of the day, we're killing our community by ordering from Amazon, even though Amazon might have created a center down in Albuquerque, so it's really convenient. We need to find a way to help our mom and pops and our local businesses compete in this space. And so this is a technology opportunity that on the fingertips, that is just as convenient, we need to make it just as convenient for us to order locally as it is to order from Amazon. And to create some sort of app that it becomes our first, this would be one of our bold initiatives here, create an app that really becomes our number one resource for Santa Fe, whether that's a tourism app, so people don't think of it when they're tourists here to go to it to buy locally, they go to it to find the events that are happening this weekend. So it's an arts and cultural app, and that becomes the gateway for people to adopt it, whether it's the Margarita Trail, or whether it's a arts and cultural, you know, studio tour thing, but at the same time, it could say, "But if you're looking for anything here, this app might have it." And it becomes a resource for locals as well as tourists to buy local as much as possible. I forgot my last one, but I appreciate this. I agree with Commissioner Bustamante that a lot of this is, has, you know, there's pent-up demand to have some action items, but I'd like to have the sort of the brainstorming of what are these bold moves that we can do to really jumpstart some major change in economic development here? Because if we talk about housing affordability, if all we do is have low-wage jobs, there's nothing we can do to make things affordable here. So it's, we need to work on economic development, so the next generation and all of our kids have a fighting chance to stay here because they're great jobs for them. But thank you very much, I look forward to this and helping deploy the next steps of this and having those big, these big bold initiatives.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. I too agree with Commissioner Green and Bustamante. I feel like I've seen this plan, I've heard about broadband for eight years, you know, and nothing has really happened. And so it's frustrating to me also to hear and see this plan. I mean, first of all, value-added agriculture, okay, horrible description. How about regenerative agriculture? How about, you know, some other kind of words? I mean, I find value-added agriculture just like boring as sin. But, you know, we've had this aggregate program also since I've been here, and we still don't have any real basis, like I think aggregate needs the app, absolutely. You know, that is one way it could really be functional for the community of actually making it work. So, you know, regenerative agriculture is a little more modern term, even though it's an old way of doing things. So I think we need some modernization here, and looking at this as not just taking all the stuff that we've had in the plan for the last eight years, or 10 years, or 20 years, and, you know, just regurgitating it, and, you know, let's have some action items. I agree. I mean, yes, we have to have a plan to get to the next stage, but plans just sit on shelves. I mean, that is the biggest problem that I've seen with plans, is where's the action? So, you know, and then with outdoor education or outdoor activities, you know, it says partner with other groups. Well, we have the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, that encompasses a good part of northern New Mexico. Since I have sat on that boards the last seven years, I have seen it develop and grow. And it is interested in economic development, it is part of Santa Fe County, you know, it does include three counties, but there's somebody right there who is already doing some pretty interesting things at Los Luceros and other places. And so, you know, like, it just says, partner with other organizations, but who, and what, and when, and how? You know, like, those are the kind of questions that I want to see. And housing, okay. There are a lot of people doing really innovative things. One of my friends is working with the Hotel Santa Fe, who's coming up with, you know, like, a new form of lightweight concrete, but not anywhere near as detrimental to the environment, that is a way to build housing, and, you know, who's thinking out of the box. And I would like to see Santa Fe County think out of the box, be a little more, I know it's hard for government to do that after being here for seven years, but at the same time, I would like to see us find these more interesting technologies that are being developed and work with them, because that is what is going to help our children who live here. The south side has way too many children and not enough schools. And so that is where the population has gone. People don't want to bus their children to a Seque Madre or some of the schools on the east side, because the east side has gotten too expensive for any of them to live at, you know? So we need to come up with some smart ideas about education for children, family, supporting families, because the more we support these families, the more they're going to support us. And I'm not going to belabor all the other things that have been said, but I-- thank you for making an effort, you know, to get us a plan. I mean, I thought we had a plan when I first came here, but it was like way too long and way too dense. So I like, I like the fact that this is targeted and short and, you know, has some measurements and ideas, but a lot of these are, have been around for a long time, so.
Commissioner Hanson, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to contextualize the plan, this is a plan that's been several years in the making. It's undergone several leadership changes, both at the department level, at the director level, manager level, moving from one department to another, and that's not to excuse anything other than to explain that when I came on board here about a year ago, the first thing I heard was, "Where's the plan? What's going on with the plan? What's happening with the plan?" In general, I agree with a lot of the comments made, there's not a lot of information in the plan that boldly steps out from the previous plans, it doesn't really identify any innovative concepts or ideas. The mandate was to finish this plan and present it to the board, it was not to stop and redo the whole plan, as far as I understood it, unless that was direction that I might have missed. Finish the plan, get it to the board, and that's what I was attempting to do. With regard to actions, in the year that I've been here, it's not been dependent on the plan in terms of not looking for, "What does the plan say to do?" We worked on a innovative film, sustainable film project over, a pilot project over the summer, with sustainability, with the film division, with economic development. We funded a consultant, we spent three months developing the framework for a pilot that would support the needs of the remote production facilities based on conversations with Netflix and NBC Universal in terms of what their needs are. We came up with a pilot that had a three-pronged approach, and, you know, we've been trying to figure out a way to roll this out in some fashion. We immediately went into partnership with the Outdoor Recreation Conference, we worked with the city to put that on in the September, October frame, did outreach to those industries, worked with a number of different companies. We've been having continuous meetings from that conference until now, following up on the needs of those individual businesses, identifying areas where we can support arts, culture, and creative industries by supporting and sponsoring events, identifying the events that are important to the county. So these are actions that have been taken, they're not in the plan, we've been doing these things. With respect to broadband, we've engaged to complete one broadband, one solid attempt at a broadband application for a Connect New Mexico grant, which we came up short because we're technically unable to complete the information, you know? So we're in the process of a very technical and very difficult challenge process for MAP on broadband to try to challenge the assertions of certain carriers that say that 95% of Santa Fe County is covered. That's what it says, 95% of Santa Fe County is covered, we don't need broadband, that's what it says. So we have to spend all of this last 30 days to dispute what it seems to be ridiculous statement, we have to come up with evidence, we have got a team of people working as much as around the clock for the way we can do this as one of many projects. So actively doing that while having submitted an RFP to get a broadband plan and a planner onboard. Commissioner Green speaks about local, so we researched, and I say "we" because, you know, we are a division of people and we're a department of people, we researched. There is a solution to the problem. The question is, is it a problem? I didn't know that it was a problem, we found very great, I can roll this out in weeks, Blue Dot is the name of the company, they make a solution for buy local, it's a very simple program, it removes us from having to do any interaction with the financial side of the credit card business, it's a very simple program, and, you know, so it sounds really great, is there a demand, is there a need? Looking at the spectrum of needs while at the same time trying to complete the work of others over a very short period of time. So I agree that what's represented in the plan is not innovative in and of itself, what I would say is the work that I and Andy and the department has been doing is innovative, and we haven't had an opportunity to roll these things out for you and to present them in a fashion that will, you know, give you the confidence in the strategies that we are following, in the areas that have been identified. Again, we've made very solid progress in understanding what the needs are for an arts council, and moving forward ahead with getting a consultant to move that project forward, while at the same time, again, engaging in activities that support the arts right now. So I, you know, I'm a little bit at a loss to say, what can, what could we have done better with a three-year-old plan with multiple kind of fathers and mothers, if you will, with different directions shifting and turning, and people wanting to know, "Where's that plan?" Well, here it is, here's the plan. It's not the plan I would have written, it's not the direction I would have gone, but it is complete and it's delivered. And I think there's an opportunity to build on the comments and the responses to both improve, you know, the, this plan, potentially, although I would say that our best bet is to complete this plan and supplement it and do come up with the innovative, forward-looking document that this body demands, and I'm happy to start work on that process to alleviate any feelings of disappointment that have come from, again, a changing plan that has got multiple inputs. At one point, it was almost all about the SLDC and the SGPM and codes and things like that, and when I read that, I was like, "My God, there is no innovation here, there are no forward-looking things." So I take, we take your comments seriously, obviously, they're very passionate, very felt, and we'll do what we can and look for direction. Do you want us to rewrite this plan to reflect those sentiments, or would you prefer that we focus on starting over with a new, let's call it an economic development strategy going forward? It doesn't have to be an economic development strategic plan, but a forward-facing concept paper to guide us in the future.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Green. Mr. Green first.
Thank you. So all support and appreciation for where this has gotten to, and I understand this has been something that languished for, since before I was a commissioner. So it's great that you grabbed it and sort of not quite put it to bed, but you can kind of expect that this has languished, and it seems similar to the things in the past. But today, we passed an interim budget, right? And if we up here are sitting here going, "Wow, we, you know," the key to prosperity in this community is not in affordable housing for just a few people, it's in lifting people up to the next generation of jobs and the next op-- It's in lifting people up to the next generation of jobs and the next opportunities." And that goes through economic development. That doesn't go through affordable housing, although they're somewhat related, but not on. And if, if a third staff member or a fourth or fifth or a contract that says, "Let's do this again," is something that is, that you would recommend and we think is a priority here, we probably would support this, right? And so, this is great. This is a milestone. I don't think, I certainly don't think that this plan can hold up for 10 years, but it's a sort of reiteration of the past. And yet, I think there's an opportunity for us to go, "Hey, wait a second. Let's give, you know, in a year from now or nine months from now, can we have an action plan?" You know, whether it starts to go to the strategic doing level of things that, that Lauren has brought to us or a combination of strategic doing and really aggressive looking at, as she uses as a tool, the asset-based look at our community, right? The assets and needs. And so, it's sort of like a SWAT thing and say, "What are the opportunities that we have? Who are we as a community?" Whether it's, you know, we're an aging community, we want to cultivate the next generation of kids, you know, we're an arts community, those are assets, and then there are other opportunities. You know, we do have a lot of science and technology. We have culture and film and hospitality and tourism. All these things should be, how do we take what we got and what we love and what we cherish and move this on? I think this is a great start to sort of reiterate what we think. I don't know whether this is something that we say, "Let's put this one to bed, adopt it, and then invest in the next one immediately." But again, more doing, if that means more staff or, or whatever you think is right for your department, bring it on, right? I mean, we were blessed to have enough money to, to fund a lot of things that, especially in the affordable housing spectrum. But again, affordable housing is not the only answer here. Housing affordability is a bigger key than affordable housing, and economic development is a bigger impact than affordable housing. And I think that that's a, probably a more worthy investment in us and probably has less of a cost to us and a bigger bang for the buck. So, all support for this. Love your passion for this too, because I've seen you for well over a decade working in this spectrum. Let's get, let's get it done, and I appreciate this. And now, let's, you know, your recommendations. Pass this, move on, but move on with intention.
Commissioner Green, Mr. Chairman, just to address the point, did request an FTE? Did not get that. So, I mean, you know, we're making the requests and the recommendations. It's obvious the need is there and the, the desire to be engaged in a number of different areas. And to the extent that we can do it with what we have currently, we try to do that, try to supplement that with any contractual assistance that we can get as well. But we, you know, maybe I was ineligible in my request in terms of the specifics of that information, and maybe could do better the next time around to, to better quantify the need and to qualify how those, that, that person might be used.
And I'm sorry that we didn't respond to that appropriately from our side because we passed a budget just an hour and a half ago, and we probably should have looked at these specifics because obviously everyone up here cares about this dearly. So, thank you.
Mr. Bustamante.
Thank you. I was going to say exactly what Commissioner Green was saying with regard to, I think this is the next step in strategic doing, to identify your top things that you want to get done and identify all the players who would help get it done. That really is an opportunity here, and I think there's, you know, there's a, a lot of folks up here will tell you exactly what needs to get done, but you can identify your priorities. And I think I would ask, and I was prepared to wait until we call for items from the commission to direct the manager to provide some support for strategic doing for economic development and identifying those projects that would be your highest priority and doable. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I found the discussion rather inspiring, so, but I don't think I need to add anything. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have Chris and Jeff online?
Mr. Chair, yes, Chris Michel's is online.
Okay, let's give him three minutes.
Thank you so much for giving the public three minutes. Do we really deserve it? Fifty-three hours just talking to yourselves. But I want to stick up to the day, which I find lately, looking at the budget, is that the biggest concern I see is you're cutting the public out of the process.
Mr. Michel's.
You're not following our laws, but...
Uh, we are having trouble hearing you. I don't know if you can get closer to your microphone.
Is that better? Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Can, you can hear me now?
Much, much better, thank you.
That's much better, yes.
First, I think that you've pretty cut, pretty much cut the public out of your process. You're talking, no, I, I can't, what's, there's a lot of noise in the background. He's talking. There, there's a, what I'm going to take up to you today, because I only have three minutes, is I've been lately looking at your budget process, and here's what I find is, you have taken the public out of the process. The information that in the past and currently by law should be available to the public is not. For example, this is direct, this is directly and recent. On your website, once upon a time, on your current website, you have the budget listed. The last budget on that website that's listed is 2016. We didn't change the law. You folks stopped putting the budget up there. You apparently don't want the public to see it. Second, your sunshine portal, which we're so proud of, going back to 2011, '72, has a direct requirement, and this is a resolution by the council, a direct requirement that the budget be on the sunshine portal. It is not. Why not? Because you don't want it there. You've got direct laws at the Department of Finance Authority with which you negotiate your public, every, negotiate every year your budget. Your interim budget is going to be sent to DFA for their approval. When they send it back as approved, it ought to be by law, part, be put, made available to the public through putting it in your minutes. You haven't done that for about five years. When you finally get your final budget, of which the public won't have any input here because you'd rather do that without asking for any input, when you finally get the, the final DFA approval, you will, by law, put that in your minutes. You don't. You, you basically are, are fly, you get the public flying blind. If we're interested in the budget, it's nowhere to be seen. You're talking, you're running a little talk show for yourselves. But here's, here's an example of other, other large communities in Los Alamos, which, I mean, in New Mexico that actually do this right and sometimes even legally. Los Alamos, Taos, Dona Anna, Bernalillo. None of them hide their budget. You hide yours and you violate laws. You violate state law. You violate the sunshine portal, resolution. You took it off your website. Ask yourself, "Why are you doing this?" These are laws. The first thing you've got to do if you're going to serve the public is follow public laws. And you have terrible, you're terrible. You're not doing it. It's not just this. On some other day, I'll take up with you the failings that you have with EPR. We are a constant violation of the EPR Act, and you folks don't seem to care. All of these-ish areas where the public ought to be involved, they aren't, and it's because of you. It's not those people you're chastising. Look to yourself. Why are you violating the law? Why are you blocking the public out? Anyway, look at that. Thank you.
And do we have Jeff DeGroot on the line as well?
Mr. Chair, I do not see Mr. DeGroot online.
And do you see anybody else with their hand raised?
Mr. Chair, I do not.
And no one in the audience? Okay, so much for the public hearing. Thank you. And now is number nine, matters from the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. Don't have much in the way of additional updates. I do think relative to some of the items that were addressed in the, you know, draft economic development plan, that they can appropriately be addressed as part of the capital planning process in terms of where the county makes some of those strategic investments. So, look forward to that dialogue, and we'll definitely work with Cindy to ensure that we're continuing to support our economic development department relative to taking this plan and moving it forward into a strategic doing direction. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Matters from public commissioners. Let's start with Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, on May 11th, I was planning to have coffee and tea under the trees, but because of the weather being so unpleasant, I canceled it, and it will be this weekend, May 18th, from 10:00 to noon at the Reunity Resources Community Farm. John Dupuy from the City of Santa Fe Water Department will be speaking along with his wife, who is the Interstate Stream Director, Hannah Wisely-Wright. And she, she is the Interstate Stream Director, and they are doing a series of meetings that are incredibly important about water throughout the state, so I hope that people will attend. We had a wonderful San Ysidro River Blessing on Sunday, May 12th, on Mother's Day, so Happy Mother's Day to everybody, but also San Ysidro Day is actually really tomorrow, May 15th, but it was done on Sunday, and because it had gotten moved up, I know that many of you know that I sit also on the Santa Fe River Commission, and so we were able to move up the water release, and there was water in the river, and everybody was really happy. There was about 200 people there at the River Blessing, and our Lady of the Virgin Mary showed up, brought by the Caballeros. The priest was there from the San Ysidro Church. The Three Sisters Collective was also there, and along with all of the community members from the Village of Aguafria, it was really an amazing group of people celebrating San Ysidro, who is the patron saint of farming. Then, earlier that week, Homewise gave a easement on a piece of land off of May's Road that connects the Casa Allegra neighborhood to the Los Hermanos Park, and because of that, it allows for the Sequia Trail to continue down even further to, towards Rafina. And so, that was another celebration, and a young man of seven years old got to cut the ribbon, and he did it without any fanfare or ceremony. He just came and cut it. It was quite nice. And then on June 1st is Casa Allegra, which is the neighborhood I live in, is 75 years old, and we will be having a celebration on the Salazar Green for that neighborhood. It is the orig, first neighborhood that STAM built in the City of Santa Fe, and many of the houses were built 75 years ago. So, that is exciting, and that is all I have for today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a couple of things to, to report. First off, this morning, I was happy to take a tour of some county facilities up in Chimaio in an effort to figure out how to secure a new post office for the Chimaio area. Want to thank Leandro Cordova, our deputy county manager, for helping lead this, and some of the folks from Public Works and some of the folks from senior services that are, have helped coordinate it. The post office sent reps from Albuquerque, Denver, and Phoenix, and it looks like we might get lucky and be able to secure a replacement post office for Chimaio. No promises, it's in their hands, but we did a good job on our side to present them with some options. As was mentioned in both the New Mexican and in this room today, Santa Fe County has been doing a pretty extensive exercise and effort to challenge the broadband planning maps. And so, as Juan mentioned a second ago, the, the current maps show that 95% of the county is covered by broadband. That's perfect furrowed brow there, Commissioner Bustamante. The recorder can't see, can't record the furrowed brow, but I thought I'd say it out loud, because you know just as well as I know that it's not true, that broadband is not available at 95% of the county. So, we are in a, taking advantage of a state challenge period, and we are putting together challenges to census block groups that are, are the statistical areas and the mapped areas. There are 113 map areas in the census block areas in Santa Fe County. Probably about 50% of them do not, are not under this county's jurisdiction, but they are, but about 50% of them are, and they're in all four, five of our commission districts, and we need to challenge that so that we will be eligible to, to get federal money. As a part of that, we put together a public survey and, for our constituents, and that was reported in the New Mexican, and we posted it on our website, at the county website. We distributed it on Facebook and Nextdoor, and as of earlier this afternoon, we had 316 submissions, which considering we thought we would get 20 to 30, 316 is 10 times more than that, what we thought we were going to get. And it is pretty amazing what people will say when you ask them, and especially when broadband is the, is the topic. So, we're going to be using these surveys results as evidence for the challenge maps and for further insight about what areas need better broadband and what solutions and how people are using it. It's pretty insightful. We will be publishing results in the next few days, and hopefully all of you can send out a last call tomorrow to your constituent newsletters and to fill this out today or tomorrow, because on Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, we are going to stop taking submissions, and we're going to publish the results so that we can use it for a Thursday afternoon or Friday set of challenge submissions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And will you send us the thing to put in our newsletter?
Happily do so, and Amber, I bet you, you're listening to this right now. We'll send it out right now.
Okay. Commissioner Bustamante.
Thank you. Yeah, so I really want to say thank you to the planners who are working with the Water Subcommittee out of the Los Yenega Valley Association. They have been responsive in, there had been concerns, there was $150,000 for those on the commission who may not be aware, that had been requested a couple of years ago, or they're down to, "We better use this money to get water planning," and it's very specific to planning. There had been a large group and somewhat in the spirit of the caller, a lot of movement to get the money without a lot of the community involvement, and very specifically, the traditional use entities, the Asequias and the mutual domestic, had not been involved in that process. And Santa Fe County's planning has really stepped up, reevaluated, what does it really take to get this money used in a manner that helps support the water in that particular area and acknowledging the voices of the community members who are, frankly, have the senior water rights, which was never a part of the conversation. And I say that quite sensitively. It is a big deal. There have been his... quite sensitively, it is a big deal, there have been historic commissions and historic county staff, when I say historic, I don't mean 1800s, I mean just in the early 2000s, who had really made efforts to somewhat acquire water in that area, which would ultimately mean the relinquishment of the senior water rights, and that really came to a head the last couple of weeks, and now seems to be on track with what it would take to assure that those senior water rights are managed in the interest of local food in that area, which is what that water would be used for, for those Asachias. As well, I want to, we didn't really get a chance, we wouldn't, wasn't part of the timing, but there was a recent meeting where Commissioner Green went to the park here in his district, where they were going to take trees down, and I just wanted to thank the commissioner publicly for having to leave our meeting, but to make his voice heard in the protection of those trees. They are Siberian elms, Siberian elms are problematic, and the county's opportunity to acknowledge the importance of trees unless you have an alternative for where we get, you know, oxygen, et cetera, but really that canopy matters in that particular location, and people showed that, so I wanted to make sure that I thanked you for that. As well, Manager Schaefer, I want to thank you for being responsive and helping economic development with some strategic doing, it is a good process, and things will move along, so thank you for that. I am encouraged with what's in front of us with the W-PAC, and want to thank my fellow commissioners for your confidence in that area as we move forward, it's something that feels like a big bite, but it won't be a hard chew. And then, the other, the last is, I have been asked, so La Cienega Valley Association has a, every other month they have a community breakfast, and this was the second meeting where they had a request for support on, from the city of Santa Fe to support some funds to repair their wastewater treatment facility, and then I was asked to please move forward and direct the county manager to engage in conversations with the city of Santa Fe officially in the interest of doing joint wastewater treatment. So, that came from that meeting with the community members, we had a discussion of, well, why wouldn't we, and the answer was, well, we haven't gotten there, so the next step is a formal request for you to please, a request to the city, for you to please engage with the city of Santa Fe in this interest, so we can see how and where it will go. There is hope, and there had been stated support on the council a couple of months ago at one of their meetings, they were very clear that we should work together, and in light of that, as things don't go necessarily as smoothly as they can, we just appreciate the start on the conversation and see how we can repair that problem, because we are currently exceeding the E coli levels on a daily basis, and not we are, we are receiving the exceeded E coli levels in downstream from the wastewater treatment facility, which is very problematic for the residents in that area, who feel that they've just been slighted all the way around. The good news is, is PFAS issue is becoming more understandable by the community, community leadership has taken their time to get flyers, and very much grateful to Shelley for taking the time to make flyers available, sending them to them so they can make their own copies, and then their meeting to show people how they can apply for the money for support and remediation, if they need the remediation of their well, you know, filtration basically is all it would be. So, there's a lot of action there, but the PFAS is less of the concern, there's continued conversation about the, and I won't say it's less, it's more of an understanding, it's still a very large concern, but the E coli and the wastewater treatment facility and how we're going to move forward as a county keeps that community hopeful. And then lastly, Galistejo has a request, and I don't know if this is something that would have to be approved by the commission, or if it's something that the county can take action on, but in the interest of just putting it out there now instead of waiting, Galistejo has, Representative McQueen is acquiring signage that says entering the historic village of Galistejo, or something comparable to that, and they have a couple of locations identified, one of the locations is actually owned by the Galistejo Community Association, and the signage would have to be on public lands. So, the request, it's a very small plot where they'd like to put it, but ultimately they're requesting that the county would lease that land or buy it for a dollar, whatever, it's not even an acre, I mean, it's a tiny little piece, it's a corner, as you're coming in from the south, southwestern side of sorts, that we would enter into agreement so that the sign letting people know that they are entering the historic village would be able to be placed along that roadway. So, that will be, I don't know if we need to have an official, if this needs to be brought to us, and if it does...
We can look into it, Commissioner, to see what actually is on offer, and come back to the board as appropriate.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, thanks.
Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you. I suspect, just, I wanted to, about the request to talk to the city about the joint wastewater pursuit, I think that also has to come from the full board. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but to give direction to the county manager to actually talk to the city, we actually have to discuss that, and so it would be, I think it would be helpful to know, I mean, I, you and I chatted, and I know, like, city utilities, some people have talked about, so there's a lot of talk about it, but maybe if we made an effort to formalize that in a resolution that actually brought the information about where status and, you know, just so that it was a little more clear, I think it would be helpful, and I'm happy to work with you on that, but I think that has to come.
I appreciate any direction, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, but it was a good thing to bring up, because I, you know, it's, it's starting to bubble closer to the surface, and, you know, whatever, no pun intended on any count, because, and we're going to, and I'm going to do coffee with the commish in June, the middle of June, on Wednesday, but it's one of the two middle weeks, I think it depends on when we can get Hondo Station 2, and so the District 4 liaison, Tina Salazar, will be sending out the, the actual date to everybody, and I look forward to actually, for change, seeing everybody in person. Thank you.
Thank you. From District 5, I just wanted to mention several events that are coming up. On May 23rd, we're having a meeting with the Vaya Vista community to discuss their trash options and the land that has been littered. On June 1st, on a more hopeful note, we're having the grand opening of the Nicholas Sanchez Park, and that's in the Carlson District, and very popular park, anybody who wants to come is invited, that's 11 o'clock on June 1st. And then finally, June 6th would be Hour with Hank, and I'll see what other issues people want to bring to me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd like, one of the initiatives that, I know we have NACO coming up, and I don't know who's going to NACO, but I plan on going to NACO. At last year's NACO, I spoke to our EPA Administrator, and he very specifically said, please bring the regional city-county project to them, and it is eligible for much more money if we do it as a partnership than what the city would have available on their own, and I don't know if the city actually understands that or cares, but let's go make that really much more obvious to them, to, to know that there's, I think it's like three times more money if it's a reg, considered a regional project as opposed to a municipal project, so if, if there's any way that we can reach out to the EPA to sort of get some of that stuff so that we can start to make the pitch to them, and maybe go to NACO prepared with something, we might expedite this process.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I am going to NACO, and I agree with that pursuit, but I also want to comment that there is E coli on the other side of the wastewater plant, it is not just on the downstream side, so it is, it is clearly a problem for the entire, well, a good portion of the Santa Fe River. But I agree with you also on the fact that there is a lot more money to do a wastewater plant when we are a regional effort.
Okay. Do we have any other elected officials who are online, or in the room, not in the room, online for matters from us? No? Okay. Matters from the county attorney, Attorney Young, you want to give us the update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'd ask that we go into executive session this afternoon to discuss threatened or pending litigation which Santa Fe County is or may become a participant is allowed by Section 10-15-1 H7 NMSA 1978, and discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights is allowed by Section 10-15-1 HA NMSA 1978. Now specifically including, number one, Board of County Commissioners for the county for Santa Fe versus Turquoise Trail Community Association, it's in the First Judicial District Court, and case number is D-101-CV202301243, and secondly, acquisition of real property for the Puake Basin Regional Water System.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we go into executive session to discuss the matters just presented by the county attorney.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we need a roll call.
Mr. Chair, may I ask, would it be appropriate, since we don't have any further matters after the meeting, to adjourn the meeting after that?
Good, good point to...
I can include that in my motion.
Yeah.
No, that's a friendly amendment on my part, too.
Okay.
Okay, for the roll call, Commissioner Anna Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Anna Hanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Camila Bustamante?
Yes.
And Chair Hank Hughes.
Yes.
So, we are adjourned, and we will meet with the attorney.